Everyone here in the chamber and those watching via livestream and call the June 24th, 2025 regular board meeting of the Board of Education to order with most board members present. Our trustee Wyatt Payne will be joining us in a little while. Dr. Bagula is participating via livestream. I see her right there waving to us. She is still doing her Yale training, so she's going to come back new and improved. We're very excited for her and continuing her professional development. So we will start. We do not have our, we will just do a pledge of allegiance straight up. Okay. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Trustee Cruz, you want a final pledge of allegiance here?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God and in this small, limited, just small.
All right. Please be seated. We'll now move to, we'll now move to A3, our land acknowledgement, which is a traditional custom that dates back centuries in many native nations and communities. Our land acknowledgement was developed in partnership with local Kumaii leaders. Students from the San Diego School of Creative and Performing Arts prepared the following video to show our respect for the Kumaii people who are the original stewards of the land our school district occupies. Roll the clip.
We respectfully acknowledge that the Kumaii people are the original inhabitants and caretakers of these lands now known as San Diego.
Despite the attempted genocide and ongoing impacts of colonization, the Kumaii spirit remains unbroken and their traditions continue to thrive as they carry the memories of their ancestors who bravely resisted cultural erasure and fought to protect their land and way of life.
In honoring their legacy, we pledge to uphold their cultural heritage and right to safeguard their sacred connection to the land for future generations.
With gratitude and strength, we stand with the Kumaii embracing the past while forging a brighter tomorrow.
All right. Thank you, SD CPA. We will now move to item B, adoption of the agenda. We have a full document tonight. I always say that, but sometimes I mean it, and I mean it tonight, including the second reading of the adoption of our 2025-2026 Local Control Accountability Plan and the district budget and the swearing of student trustees and restorative practices. So it is indeed a full agenda tonight. And do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? I have a motion from trustee Baldus and a second from trustee Cruz. We will move directly to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other trustees, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. Ms. Stoltz, can you please provide information for public speakers about today's meeting protocols?
Yes, today's meeting of the Board of Education is a business meeting that is conducted in public and board members will not engage in dialogue with members of the audience. Board bylaw 1025 sets the time limit for public comment on agenda items at 10 minutes per side, pro and con, or 20 minutes total. Speakers will be able to provide testimony at the beginning of the appropriate agenda item or at the end of the meeting for non-agenda comment. Please listen for your name to be called. Speakers are listed and called in the order received. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. Speakers participating via Zoom will be asked to unmute when their name is called. If you are unable to unmute yourself, we will call the next speaker. Please follow along with the agenda so that you know when your item is coming up for discussion. When you begin speaking, the green light below my name on the dais indicates that the timer has started. When the light turns yellow, you will have one minute remaining. A buzzer will indicate that your time has expired. If you have not yet done so and would like to sign up for in-person public comment, iPads are available in the back of the auditorium and in the lobby.
Thank you, Ms. Stoltz. We will now take a moment to recognize our outgoing student trustees Quentin Baldus and Joseph Cruz, whose terms expire on June 30th, 2025. I understand that we have a video tribute to present.
One of the things that I always remember is when we were talking about student outcome-focused governance, you brought us back to the fundamental experience of what it is to be a student. And for us, it really did bring home how important it is to always keep a student first and foremost in our minds and to ensure that we're providing the foundation for you to go out and pursue a life that's fulfilling to you and gives you meaning and also helps support the whole of society.
I'm deeply humbled and honored to represent the almost 95,000 students of the San Diego Unified School District. I'll work tirelessly to understand and advocate for all of our diverse needs and interests.
For the 2024-2025 Advisory Board, we have some big plans and big aspirations. Trustee Cruz?
Throughout my life, I've learned that a life worth living is one where you're serving others, that my happiness stems from the joy of those around me, that I am what others will remember me by.
I want to thank both trustee Baldus and trustee Cruz, both for offering not only a great perspective on what we're trying to do here at San Diego Unified, but for always teaching me something new.
You continuously elevate the conversation, reminding us how important it is to center student voice and student needs in every single thing you do.
Joseph, my trustee, he has been a very thoughtful trustee and he's carried the weight of the community on his shoulders. I feel that in his responses and everything that he does. So he has represented them well. For Quentin, I think you're one of the most fascinating trustees we've had of the group because you always stay focused on the bigger picture.
Congratulations to both of you, Quentin and Joseph. You've been such amazing board members this year, and I've thoroughly enjoyed spending time and learning more about you and just seeing you thrive over this last year. Really appreciate the fact that you really took into account student voice by bringing together representatives from all of our schools and even bringing them to the meetings.
I've really seen your growth since you began a year ago to where you're at now. And I know that the way that you've brought that voice in is by listening to other students. So you've just been great elected officials. We're going to miss you. You're going to do great things going forward, but we always have a place for you to come back and contribute here at San Diego Unified.
Well, it's not until you see the video that you realize that growth is real. They have really grown into young men in that time. We obviously as a board thank both of you for your service. It's been, it's been an honor and a pleasure, but I'd also say, one of the things, and I'll just say this again and for the record, is we need to institutionalize a mentor role because we've, in a way, we always, I know, when we started this, my thought was, I'm going to be consistent about mentoring these two young gentlemen. And I know I said it about the last one, you get wrapped up in things for whatever, whatever it's worth, I, in the future, I think we should really institutionalize that mentor role because in the end, you have too many responsibilities that if you don't actually hardline it, it won't happen. And our student trustees deserve that mentorship, particularly since a lot of the context, particularly closed session and a lot of other contexts, they're not necessarily privy to a lot and without that mentorship may not fully understand what's, how things are developing at the district. So I'm making that commitment to, to, to the student trustees that come next to, to learn from that, learn from my shortcomings with regard to that. We have for you a small token of our appreciation. I'm sure you're going to put this with your soccer trophies and, and your JROTC trophies next to them. Quentin, we have this, I know because it says QB. And trustee Cruz, here is yours, it says JC. You can open it and, and show that to the camera. And I think we should probably, why don't we take, have you say a few words and then we'll take, take a picture, a final picture, but, but. It's usually not, we don't usually see the pictures of what we're doing, but is that a suggestion where you do it with the new trustees and you? Would you like to do that? Let's do that. Perfect. Right now, we're going to take some comments from our student trustees. I'm sure they have some fine parting words for us. Oh, you want to do your comments at the very end?
Oh, yeah. I was, I believe that this is going to happen at the end of the meeting when we swear in the new trustees. The new trustees will give comments and then we'll give comments to...
Is that what you want to, okay. We will modify that. That's not the agenda as it stands, but I think that's a small enough modification that we will just do it on the fly. So we will move that, their comments to when we swear in the other trustees. Yeah. That's good. No, it's good. You're thinking about the, the theater of the whole thing. It's good. Wrap it up. I like it. Good thinking on the fly. That's, that's a sign of just how exceptional you two are as trustees. I like that. Next up then, we will move to C2, and that is the Adoption Resolution on the Matter Recognizing June 2025 as Gun Violence Prevention Month and Adoption of the Resolution on the Matter of Recognizing June 2025 as Men's Mental Health Awareness Month. Is there a motion on items C3 and C4? We'll take them together. Trustee Hazen, do I have a second? Trustee Baso, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Stoltz, are there any speakers on these two items?
Yes, we have three speakers on item C3, which is the resolution recognizing June 2025 as Gun Violence Prevention Month. We have one virtual speaker, Bill Slohmanson. If you are available, please unmute. You have three minutes. Mr. Slohmanson?
Am I up now?
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Bill Slohmanson. My wife was employed by San Diego Unified School District for 42 years, so it's nice to be connected with you all in this, in this way once again. Today's my wedding anniversary, so lucky for you, domestic tranquility dictates brevity, so only be about a minute or so. I am a gun owner. I'm a Vietnam vet. I'm a former life member of the National Rifle Association, which was a very, very different organization when I was in the military. I speak in support of the pending resolution. And unlike those who foolishly claim, à la some slippery slope argument, that next they'll take our guns away, I've read all the U.S. Supreme Court gun cases. They do not say anything like that at all, quite the opposite. As an independent, I've written articles, essays, and op-eds about a number of gun issues. And I'm among those who are willing to embrace more gun control in the name of saving lives. But don't listen to me. The stats are already, the statistics are already out there about the positive results that are associated with safe storage. And for those who might feel differently, there's no doubt that they have not personally experienced a gun-related tragedy. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to offer my support in support of this common sense, safe storage measure. It does not take away gun rights. It avoids taking away a child's life. Thank you.
And we have two speakers in person, John White and Lori Van Orden. If you would please come forward, you have three minutes each.
Hi, my name's Lori Van Orden. I'm a retired SDUSD teacher and a board member of San Diegans for Gun Violence Prevention. And I'm here tonight to thank trustees Hazen and Bezo, the board, the superintendent and the district for continuing its leadership in promoting the reduction of gun violence. Since the horrifying murders of teachers and staff at Parkland High School in 2018, San Diego Unified School District has stepped forward to speak out against gun violence as an advocate for actions that can save lives. For example, providing information about gun violence restraining orders and about the responsibility of parents and adults to securely store their guns, locked and unloaded, separate from ammunition. Secure storage of guns can prevent suicide, domestic violence, homicide, unintentional shootings, and firearm theft. Tonight's resolution continues this campaign and also recognizes that further trauma-informed solutions are necessary to keep our kids and our schools safe. Thank you for recognizing June as Gun Violence Prevention Month, but of course, protecting our children and our communities is a daily endeavor. On behalf of San Diegans for Gun Violence Prevention and all of San Diego, I want to urge passage of tonight's resolution and to thank you again for continuing to address the epidemic of firearm violence in a proactive way. Thank you.
I also had the honor of serving on the board of San Diegans for Gun Violence Prevention with Lori and Bill. I read the resolution. I applaud your efforts at passing this, and I certainly urge you to pass it. In reading the resolution, I was struck by the similarity in the messages that you're conveying in the resolution and the messages that we convey in our own brochures. Safe storage, asking, and gun violence restraining orders are the former stones of the message that we put out to the community at public events and we advocate for them as well. I am also here in the capacity as a part-time volunteer at Franklin Elementary. And I am alarmed, yet reassured by the fact that every time I go to volunteer at that school, I have to be buzzed in at the front door, I have to stand in a man trap, and then I'm buzzed in again. It's not lost on me how much security goes into keeping, into preventing gun violence, and I commend the district for making efforts in that direction. Again, thank you for bringing this resolution up, and I urge you all to vote for it.
Is that the entirety of our speakers? Okay, great. Do we have any comments from the board? Trustee Hazen?
Thank you, President Patterson, and thank you to our community members who spoke in support of this. As a mom and trustee, I'm proud to introduce this resolution with trustee Baso tonight. Gun violence is now the leading cause of death for children in America. Not illness, not accidents, guns. And over the past decade, the firearm suicide rate among young people has increased faster than among any other age group. And during the same period, we've also seen a precipitous increase in school shootings across the country, including the awful mass shooting at Robb Elementary in Uvalde, Texas, where 19 students and two teachers were fatally shot. Every day, eight children and adolescents are unintentionally shot or killed with a gun in their own homes. These tragedies are preventable. As a school district, we have a responsibility to protect our students, not just in their classrooms, but in their neighborhoods and at home. This resolution recognizes that safe gun storage, education, and communication are critical tools in preventing firearm injuries, teen suicide, and accidental deaths. It builds on state law, local ordinances, and best practices in trauma-informed school safety, and is guided by a commitment I know this board has expressed on many occasions to ensure our students' right to grow up safe and healthy and well. And before I wrap up, I want to express my deep appreciation for the work our principals, educators, counselors, school liaisons, strategic communications, and facilities and planning teams do to implement all of the things referenced in this resolution, the training, the prevention, the education, the security measures we need to put in place to keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Hazen. Trustee Cruz?
Thank you, President Patterson. I am so grateful to push this resolution forward alongside Vice President Barrera. Mental health, especially among men, has too long been brushed aside, overshadowed by stigma, silence, and outdated notions of masculinity. June gives us a moment to confront that silence head-on. This month, we recognize that strength is not just about perseverance, it's also about vulnerability, seeking help, and healing. Men deserve a place and support to care for their mental well-being without fear of judgment. As a district, we have an opportunity and a responsibility to uplift this conversation, ensuring our schools and workplaces foster environments where men, boys, and everybody could feel safe to talk, ask for help, and thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Cruz. Any further comment? I just want to thank San Diegans for Gun Violence Prevention. You have been a constant presence in this community. Your voice is amongst the most consistent of any advocacy group in the entire region. It's always good to see your red shirts. I was also raised by a Vietnam vet and early on trained in gun safety. And frankly, when I had my kids, I bought a gun safe, and I don't think they've ever seen the guns. At a certain point, you just have to recognize that these are very, frankly, unsafe things to have in a home. We, at some point in my children's growth, will maybe take them out to a range and learn safety, but at this point in time, it's, it's not safe for my kids. So I really appreciate you and your advocacy. The most important thing for our board above all else is that our kids are safe. And we'll, we'll worry about the social, emotional wellness and the academic achievement, but the most important thing is that they are safe. So I believe this work is consistent with that. So I appreciate you being here and I appreciate my colleagues for bringing this motion. Do we have any other, any further board comment? Seeing none, we will move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. I never saw the student trustees on my thing. We're going to redo it. It just didn't appear on my thing, so I didn't know. Student trustees, please vote. Now I see it. All other trustees, please vote. All right. Great. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. Thank you so much for being here this evening and speaking. With that, we will move to item D1, which is a report out from our 2024-25 evaluation of our superintendent, Dr. Fabiola Bagula. We, in collaboration with the superintendent, developed a rubric for evaluating the superintendent's performance over this last year, in which she was interim superintendent for that time period. It is very lengthy. We have provided that on our agenda. You can see, it is on the agenda, right?
No, it'll be published on the agenda after you make it public.
It'll be published on the agenda. We've already distributed it to media outlets, but we will have it in our agenda moving forward if you check online for the full one. I will not go through this lengthy text here, but we evaluated the superintendent on, came out to about eight different categories. I'll just briefly read the categories and our rating. The rating was on a scale of one to five, going from no progress district-wide to significant progress. And what we did is aggregate the, the Board of Education evaluations, including the student trustees gave their evaluations, and then we aggregated those. We had unconscious accountability, we had her at a 4.3, which indicates above expected progress. Crisis leadership, obviously, she came in at a, at a, at a critical juncture in this, in this district's experience, and she brought stability and, and led, led that, through that crisis with grace and adapted very quickly to her new role. Healthy organizational culture, that was a, she had four points on that. Student outcome goals, she helped lead us through a process of adopting student outcome-focused governance goals, and we had her at a 3.2 on that, which is expected progress. Stabilization, we gave her a 4.2. Democracy and civic leadership, she's clearly led a time in which we've had a lot of significant challenges in relation to civic participation and led us through some critical times. We gave her a 4.2 on that. And then collective wisdom, which is relying on the wisdom of the whole, staff, community, students, and her own leadership team and the board, she came out at a 4.5, which I think is reflective of the fact that that's pretty much her highest score. So we really, I think, appreciate as a board, the way in which she built consensus and governed in a way that brought together a lot of folks' wisdom and experience and, and values. And then fiscal responsibility, she had a 3.7 in terms of navigating us through some of the budget challenges we've been facing. So overall, I don't think we've summed overall, but you can see almost everything was, six out of the eight categories were, were above expected progress. So we're very excited and we're, we're excited moving forward. I don't believe, that's all we have on that. Dr. Bagula will speak in a moment remotely here. I'll have her in on the next agenda item. So that is D1. That's just a brief report out. Again, that will be available online in more detail, and it is lengthy. So D2 is administrative appointments. Dr. Bagula, I see you on there remotely. Are there any management appointments to announce?
Yes, and I want to say it's lengthy because it should hold the breadth and responsibility of this role, but that's just my humble opinion. Thank you for that. We have some folks that I want to congratulate and also welcome. I am really happy and proud of this partnership and this team that is going to help us make sure that we have beautiful instruction for all of our San Diego children, and that is our deputy superintendent of instruction, Nicole DeWitt; our senior executive director of thriving school communities, Marissa Robledo Allen; our executive director of multilingual department, for our multilingual department, Veronica Lopez Mendez; our executive director for due process hearings and mediation, Brian Spry; and I want to welcome and congratulate our new principal for Roosevelt Middle School, Stacy McGee.
Thank you, Dr. Bagula. And I, I just want to say, as much as the superintendent has been working under an interim title, we've had our, these three prime employees under the same title interim, and I, in particular, want to thank Marissa and, above all, I want to thank now permanent deputy superintendent, Nicole DeWitt. A lot of these challenges, the budget team can figure out what it looks like on the books, but socializing these changes and socializing some of these budgetary decisions is an incredibly, not just cognitively difficult process, but emotionally and socially difficult. So I want to express my appreciation for you, Nicole. And with that, we will move to item D3 again. Glad you didn't go too far, Fabi. We are going to have Dr. Bagula back here on item D3 to provide her information report.
Thank you, Dr. Patterson. As I reflected on last week's meeting, I again want to express my deepest gratitude to all of those who came out to support my appointment as superintendent. I'm beautifully overwhelmed, overwhelmed with joy, and I appreciate all the hard work that our team has already done in the last nine months. I'm looking forward to taking this journey as superintendent in partnership with all of our educators and especially our Board of Education. But we, I want to talk a little bit about wellness. We discuss our adopted wellness goal and how we're working daily to provide social, emotional, and physical wellness to our students. Well, one contributing factor to student wellness is the availability of our middle school and high school sports programs. Part of wellness is physical wellness. So Scott Juisty, Lonnie Jones, and our entire athletics department do a wonderful job at working with our schools, students, and parents to make our athletics programs a success. And I would like to take a moment to congratulate all of our California Interscholastic Federation student athletes, their dedicated families, and our coaches. Eight of our high school teams have taken home, have taken home Spring 2025 California Interscholastic Federation Championships, and we're very proud of Claremont High for Division II volleyball, La Jolla High, Division I tennis, Lincoln High, Division V softball, Mission Bay High, Division III track and field, Patrick Henry High, Open Division Badminton, Point Loma High, Division I baseball, Point Loma High, Division II softball, University City High, Division III baseball. So congratulations to our champions and to all of our students who competed this spring. I also want to update you on preschool enrollment. At our June 10th meeting, I reported that Santos Gonzalez and Ivan Torres and our entire early childhood team was in the midst of their priority preschool enrollment drive. We have a total of 1,200 seats at 29 elementary schools. Tonight, I'm pleased to report that the priority application for the state subsidized preschool program has closed, and we have received 640 applications. These families will be informed of their enrollment status by mid-July. These families will be informed of their enrollment status by mid-July. We have nearly 230 seats still available, though. So to fill those remaining slots, we will be reopening applications for late submissions throughout the school year, and our individual sites will promote them. Our San Diego Unified Funded School Readiness Preschool Program for families who are not eligible for the state's program will begin its application on July 15th. That concludes our superintendent's report, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Fabi. Oh, Dr. Bagula, rather. We will now consider item E1, approval of the proposed 2026-2027 academic calendar. Dr. Bagula, please provide information on this item as well.
Can I just ask, if we can, is there a way to turn up her volume? I can't hear what she's saying.
I'm trying to lip read it here, but it's tough.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. And when I hear the video back, it's slow, so I understand there's something happening with the technology. So trustees, tonight you're being asked to approve the proposed academic calendar for 2026-27 school year. This calendar was developed using our established instructional calendar development guidelines, which incorporate both direction from the board and relevant ed code requirements. As part of this process, the calendar committee comprising representatives of SDA, ASD, PTA, and OTBS had the opportunity to review the draft, raise any concerns, and formally vote. We received five yes votes in support of the calendar and no-no votes were submitted. During the review, two recurring items were discussed across multiple groups. One, the impact of an earlier start date on attendance. Committee members raised questions about whether beginning the school year earlier affects student attendance. We shared attendance data showing the first week attendance was consistent at 96.5% for both the 23-24 and 24-25 school years, indicating no negative impact. The placement of the non-instructional day near the springtime change. After reviewing the springtime change and spring break schedules, all groups agreed it was best to keep the non-instructional day on March 8th. Moving it later would place it too close to spring break, reducing its intended benefit. I want to acknowledge that this year, staff experienced a delayed start in convening the calendar committee. This was due to staff transitions and shifts in responsibilities, but we also recognize the importance of timely engagement and meaningful input. In response, we have actually implemented a plan to begin calendar committee meetings in September of each year and to adopt calendars on a three-year cycle moving forward. I also know there's some other missing voices from these groups that would like to be a part of it, so we are also making sure that we're, again, to the point of making sure that we're seeking the collective, we're going to invite other voices also to be in that space. So thank you for your consideration and your continued partnership as we plan for a successful 2026-27 year. Wendy will be available in case there's any questions as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bagula. Let me get a motion real quick and then, is there a motion to adopt this calendar? Trustee Hayes and a second from trustee Cruz. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Stoltz, are there any speakers on this item? Okay, we'll now move to board discussion. I see trustee Hayes with her hand up.
Yes, and I was going to comment, and it's a similar one, from the superintendent's report, and this one, and it's, and I mentioned to Vice President Barrera, so when you were discussing preschool, I know, you know, some of the feedback that I hear is around the challenge of half-day programs. And so I would, at some point, like for us to come back to what it is that families need in terms of early childhood education and whether half-day programs are really meeting families' needs and if that might be one of the reasons we're under-enrolled at least, you know, by about 200 people at this point. And then in terms of the calendar, it's also about half-days. I'm wondering, so the calendar we're asked to adopt, and I made a motion, I support the calendar as it stands, but it doesn't reflect the minimum days that some schools use. And I'm not talking about the weekly short days that elementary schools have, but I know, and I hear this from families, that many elementary schools, at least the last couple of years, have used minimum days during TK and kindergarten assessments at the beginning of each year and during weeks of parent-teacher conferences, which can be really difficult for working families who are trying to get to work on time, take care of the shifts they need to work, and also pick up their children. And so I'm wondering, and I guess the other piece that I want to point out is that at least this last year, there was essentially a week of half-days leading up to spring break with a week off school. Also particularly disruptive for all of our working families. And so I'm wondering if the board can receive a copy of this calendar that includes those anticipated half-days as well, so that we understand how some of those days may butt up against vacations and other non-instructional days, so that we understand the implications potentially for families, because I think those are important considerations.
Trustee Bazam.
Thank you, President Pedersen. I also wanted to comment on the academic calendar. I've had the opportunity to speak with some parents in clusters, various clusters in my area that were concerned, they didn't feel like they had input into the calendar, particularly some of our non-Title I school area parents. So I appreciate Dr. Bagula taking that input. Some of it was that they would end school, but they're still doing, like if you get into the championships and CIF, that that was happening like after they graduate. So things like lining it up with college, college times, the community colleges, there was some concern. So I'm glad that, as you mentioned, we'll be able to have more opportunity for parent input from all the cluster areas as well, so we can kind of make sure we're not running into those issues in the future.
Thank you, trustee Bazam. Any additional comment? Trustee Baldasson.
I'll just say I really do support moving our start date forward. I know with AP classes, there's about a month after you take the test where you pretty much just sit in class. You don't do much. The teacher puts on a movie for a few weeks. So I really support this, and I think this will really help with those classes.
Thank you, trustee Baldasson. I feel like, can we do something about this June gloom? My constituents, when you let kids out and it's gloomy, it's, it's, it, it, parents are not happy about it, kids are not happy about it, but I don't think we have much authority over that. So we have a motion and a second. We've had discussion. We will now move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All the trustees, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. All right. That will bring us to item E2, approval of revisions to the restorative discipline policy and Regulation 5144. I think we're all very excited to hear this item. Dr. Bagula, please introduce the item and...
Thank you. So thank you, President Pedersen. The next item is a presentation for board approval for updates on the restorative discipline policy, a policy that reflects the evolution of our approach to student behavior, community, and equity across San Diego Unified. The updates are grounded in research-based practices shaped by input from our educational partners and aligned with our ongoing commitment to creating equitable supportive learning environments for all students. At its core, the policy reaffirms our belief that every student deserves to feel safe, supported, and empowered to grow, not in spite of their mistakes, but through them. Restorative discipline isn't about lowering expectations, it's about raising them. It asks students to take responsibility for their actions, understand their impact, and actively participate in repairing the harm within their school communities. Our shift from punitive discipline to restorative communities is rooted in four key principles: promoting positive interactions and relationships, which I'm going to say is the antecedent to having this work work well. You can't restore if you don't have anything to restore to. Two, building on the collective strengths of our students and school communities. Three, providing solution-focused responses to conflict. And four, nurturing social, emotional, and behavioral skill development for all. Systemic reviews of research across seven countries consistently show that restorative practices improve school climate, reduce disciplinary incidents, and strengthen student-teacher relationships. To be clear, restorative practices does not eliminate consequences, they make them more meaningful. They emphasize accountability, learning, and healing over exclusion and punishment alone. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ebony Weathers, Executive Director of Equity and Belonging, and Shaw Taleby, our Executive Director of Investigation, Compliance, and Accountability. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ebony Weathers. I'm the Executive Director for Equity and Belonging, and Shaw and I are here today to present this item to you all. It is an update to Board Policy 5144, but we are up here today really as representatives of a much larger working group within the district. So this is really a team effort comprised of not just inner district folks, but a lot of our community partners and our families and students as well. So we're excited to share these updates with you all, and we will take it away. In October of 2020, the board originally adopted our restorative discipline policy. Today, we're going to be sharing, like I said, some updates. So you will see, we're going to bring you through some of the broad, broad-stroke updates on the restorative discipline policy, and then towards the end, we're going to get into some of the details of those updates based on the last five years of feedback from our community partners, as well as some growth that we've had within the district. And Dr. Bagula shared what she shared to open us today, and I think it's really powerful. We're going to jump into some of our preventative and restorative practices in just a moment, but it's important to note that we've invested a lot of time and energy into this piece because a lot of the restorative practice work in the district is around building a strong foundation of restorative communities where our students feel safe. We value respect, relationships, and responsibility, and so much of our work in restorative discipline is around building those communities to which we can restore when harm does occur. So in the beginning of the revised policy, you'll see here that we have moved from on the left, which was the original document in 2020, a list with three columns of some suggested restorative practices for our sites to use in addressing behavior. While on the right, we have added not just some suggestions on how our sites can address harmful behavior, but we've actually included, as you can see in the zoomed-in version, tools that our sites can use. So in the moment, our sites have access to restorative tools that they can use with a student or a group of students to address behavior. One of the bigger shifts that we've made with this new policy is that in addition to the paper version, we have a very robust online version that provides access, quick access, to tools for our site staff, and not just for our site staff, but also for parents and families as well. In addition to that overview document of some ways that our schools can be restorative and proactive, we also wanted to be really intentional about providing additional suggestions, tools, and resources for how sites can open from day one of the school year, inviting students in and creating that environment of safety, of responsibility, respect, and relationships. And so you'll see here a couple of those pages outfitted with some links to resources that we've curated, and like I said, not just within Equity and Belonging and not just within Investigations, Compliance, and Accountability, but really across many of our departments, including Counseling and Guidance, Special Education, MTSS, BSR. So this has really been a community effort of providing resources and support. Shaw's going to go over towards the end of our presentation, but we just wanted to share here, there's been a shift in how we've organized behavioral offenses so that we can have more accurate to the offense ways of addressing those behaviors as opposed to the original four levels. We now have five levels, and we're going to take you through an overview of those different levels and the suggested responses that we have through that restorative lens. And you'll see here in the updated table of contents, we have those icons that make this document really user-friendly for our staff, for students, for families, so that they can access with just a click different parts of the restorative discipline policy and also many of those resources. One of the fan favorites that we've had is this piece right here, and we're going to come back to this, but this, and I know it's small, so hopefully you can open this up within the document, but this is a two-page spread within the updated policy where you can see the various behaviors across different categories. So you'll see general behaviors, violence, and threats. We tried to categorize these, just so that our school site staff can really quickly at a glance see what the behavior is. You can see across the top, we've got now color-coded levels as well as the suggested response. So we've got classroom interventions, possible suspensions, permissive expulsions, and mandatory expulsion recommendations. And all of that information is really easy to read and at a glance on those two pages. But then we also get a little bit deeper into the detailed pieces. So on the left, you'll see here the original 2020 version of the RDP, or Restorative Discipline Policy, which included a short definition of the behavior. It has the student behavior incidents on the left, and then it's got a list of supportive practices and responses. What we found through feedback was that the list is great, but how can we get access to some of these tools? Because for some folks, they don't know where to find them, they don't know what they are or what they mean. And so what we tried to provide were some direct access to those resources. So you'll see on the right, the updated version, where we've taken, and I can zoom in here for you, I think, we've taken that list of student behaviors and we've given it life so that you can see it really clearly what the behavior incident is. And then you'll also see examples of definitions or potentially some examples of those different behaviors. And then over here on the far right in those lighter-colored orange bubbles, you'll actually see access that's clickable to different pieces of ed code that discuss those behavioral offenses or other existing board policies or procedures that relate to each of those behaviors. We've made that sort of paragraph up at the top that you saw here in the original version on the left. We've turned that into an easy-to-read list, and so each of the behavioral levels will include a bulleted list that defines each of those behaviors and what qualifies them to be in those categories, helping our sites and our students and their families sort of understand why the behaviors are categorized, how they are categorized. This is from Level 2, but you'll see throughout the document that we have one of these for each of the five levels. And additionally, for each of the levels, as opposed to that list of suggested practices or interventions, we've actually created clickable resources that our site staff and their families can use to implement each of these pieces. So whenever you see that icon with the little paperclip, that's actually a link to a larger resource that has five to 10 different examples of tools that somebody could use to actually put this restorative practice into implementation. Shaw's going to take us through a broad overview. These are some of our really detailed shifts between the 2020 version and the updated version that we're presenting tonight, so I'm going to pass this over to Shaw.
All right. Thank you. So we do kind of get into the weeds here in the slide, so I'm not going to go through every detail, but try and give you kind of a broader overview of the significant changes. I'll just start by saying, my office recently, as part of, I think, the district examining our internal processes and procedures, we just over this last school year took over the screening for expulsion. So that kind of gave us a lens in working directly with sites when serious issues came up. So a lot of that feedback over this last year, we took that into consideration in terms of identifying the seriousness, what's having the biggest impact, the consequences to, you know, both individual students, maybe victims, and also the community. So one of the things to understand, and sometimes we have to explain this to when parents are upset, we have a Level 5, which is specific in ed code that those are mandatory expulsions. Level 4, which we've identified, is all the expellable offenses, so they're not required, but they can be recommended. So we call those permissive expulsions. And in order for a permissive expulsion, there not only needs to be the behavior, there also needs to be, the site has to demonstrate that they've exhausted interventions, restorative practices, or there's a serious threat or danger that the student presents. So a few of the bigger changes, we previously, and education code only as a general, sexual harassment, Title IX sexual harassment, which Title IX Office is part of the ICA Office, that's a federal law, so the state regulations haven't kind of caught up to that. So what we did is we... So what we did is we disaggregated the Title IX offenses. So we have general sexual harassment, we have Title IX sexual harassment, dating violence, domestic violence, and then the more serious sexual assault, stalking. And the other big change that you'll see, and that's when you see in some of these categories where under, let's say, non-Title IX sexual harassment, you have green, orange, and red. What we've done is shifted towards more of a progressive discipline. So one of the things we identified that's a frustration, I think, for sites as well as impacted families is when you see repeated behavior and the consequences don't elevate. And, you know, everything that Ebony went over, giving the tools to the sites to really emphasize those interventions and restorative practices, at some point, there does need to be consequences for the student. And so we've actually expanded the number that is available and elevated it once it either comes to a second or third offense, so that, you know, again, I do think a higher form of discipline is also an intervention. At this point, you know, we're not the criminal justice system, but if our students aren't understanding serious consequences, then once they turn 18, it's a different story, The other thing we did is elevated certain types of offenses that were having a very serious impact, like terroristic threats, that's something that, you know, can lead to a lockdown at a school, police involvement heightens concerns around the community. And so that was something that, based on feedback and the impact it really has, especially at this time, and obviously talking about the gun safety resolution you had, we identified that that should also be permissive expulsion. So the last thing, we don't have a slide for it, but what I think is really helpful and based on my department's work with, directly with site administrators when these incidents come up, we do have detailed steps for each level. So for instance, on a Level Four behavior, you know, site administrators aren't going to have our 40-page policy on hand and as many trainings as we provide when there's a fire and something happens and they need to respond, trying to give them that checklist to make sure that they're reporting to the right people. And then one of the other big things that we're trying to emphasize is the documentation in Power School. So that way, again, if we're getting a referral to us, we have a clear history of what prior interventions were in place. And then it also helps us collect data, so we'd have much more robust data to try and understand, and maybe that gives, you know, Ebony and other departments the ability to kind of direct resources to areas where maybe we're seeing certain practices working better that can be utilized and that can be distributed across the system. So I think the only thing... And then the Board Policy is what I think you'll be voting on and adopting today, but it also comes with an administrative regulation, which is a lot, a lot more words than policy-based. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ebony and Shaw. Sit tight for a second, I'm going to get us a motion here to continue the discussion. Do you have a motion on the item? Trustee Cruz in a second, Vice President Barrera, we have a motion in a second. Marty, do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak on this item? No members of the public, great. Do any trustees wish to speak on this item or ask questions of our guests? Trustee Hazen.
Thank you, President Pedersen, and thank you for all the work that went into this, and appreciate all the engagement you did with the end-users, so both with students and with educators and with principals, and developing something that's user-friendly. So really appreciate that, and I think this really aligns with our values as a district and the work we want to do. I do have some questions, and I know I shared this with you earlier, but I'm still not clear. It's around the lack of clarity specific to suspendable behavior. So the policy's categorization of Level Three behaviors as warranting a possible suspension, for me, leaves too much room for subjective interpretation, and I worry that without clearly defined guidance on what constitutes a suspendable or expellable offense, we risk reinforcing patterns of disciplinary action that have historically and disproportionately impacted students of color, students with disabilities, and other marginalized groups. So I'm wondering if you can speak to, what for me feels like ambiguity, but specifically in that Level Three category, and why we have possible suspension, and how and why you feel confident that administrators will know when to suspend and when not to within that category.
So the categories, Level Three is specific to suspensions, Level Four obviously are the permissive expulsions, and then Level Five are the mandatory. So in terms of ed code, which, what we align with, there are only a number of offenses that can be suspendable without any prior history. So for the most part, across the board, and I think sites are aware of this, that on the first time, they cannot suspend, and they generally don't, except for, I think there's four that they're able to on the first. The other thing that I think is really important in talking to the sites as well, is you'll hear it there, on the ground, and there needs to be some discretion. There's certain types of offenses where, let's say robbery, which sounds very serious, but the elements of robbery could be, you know, a third grader trying to ask for another student's lunch money. So I think we have to, in here, kind of allow for the discretion of the sites and looking at culpability and severity of the behavior, not just the offense specifically. So I don't know if that answered your question, but for the most part, it's a...
Yeah, I mean, because what I'm hearing is that for certain offenses on the second or the third, you know, we would highly recommend someone be suspended, but it's not, that's not explicit here. So I struggle with that. And then my next question, which you just spoke to, which is around the age of students, and so I didn't see in here, is whether and how the age of students is considered when implementing the policy exactly to the example you gave, right? I noticed that some offenses result in suspension for, it describes fourth through 12th graders. But yeah, I think about, you know, the difference between a four-year-old, who I had, you know, my own child was four very recently, right, like threatening to cause physical injury, not recognizing what that means compared to a 15-year-old, and how do we distinguish between those things in the policy?
I think, I don't know how much more I have to add than what Shaw shared, but I think that what he did share was, kind of speaks to that point, which is if we account for each of those differences in whether it's age or grade level, I think it would become, you know, a K version of the restorative discipline policy, a first-grade version, a second-grade version. And at that point, when you're developing, kind of overdeveloping the policies, I think it kind of takes away from our site leader's ability to have that discretion and be able to look at the general policy and use what they know of their students and use what they know of the interventions that are available on their campuses to make those decisions around how to address the behaviors that are happening on campus. So I think overplanning can kind of be harmful, it can help us to create overdocumentation in many policies that become more confusing. When we give the guidance and we give the education and support to help them make those educated decisions at the site level, I think it has a better outcome.
And is there anything that you would recommend? Because I appreciate that feedback, we don't want to be too prescriptive and we want to provide flexibility. I guess, what are we doing or what can we do to ensure that we are, that these policies are being implemented equitably? And so I guess as a trustee, like what information would be available, I don't know, a year from now to make sure that the concerns I have aren't unfounded?
So, and I like, I know you like data, so we should, we should, I think part of this, you know, in addition to utilizing Power School, which is the student records, we're working with our IT department to develop a section that's specific for these interventions, which, you know, will help us track that. But my department is also getting a new case management system, so that will also help us in terms of, especially the ones that are referred for expulsion or come through placement appeals for suspensions and appeals, like data can be misleading, but I think we also can collect it and maybe see trends where certain sites are overutilizing suspension for the same types of offenses. So I think that's, that's what we're trying to do also with this policy, is make it the step-by-step roadmap for them to make sure we're reminding them to input the information into Power School so that it does give us a better ability to track that and address those issues.
Thank you, and maybe, I guess, to the superintendent, if we could, and I don't know when, but whenever you think is appropriate, you know, see some of that data and see how the policy, the revised policy is working and being rolled out, I think that would be really helpful. And then just the last question, because I think the work is really important and the training component of it is really important, right? I love that this guide is user-friendly and you can click on the links, but I'm wondering, in the new budget, do we, have we allocated funding to support the training, the professional development, everything that needs to happen for counselors, for educators, for principals to implement this thoughtfully and with integrity?
So one of the things that was important to us, because being part of the 2020 adoption and seeing how that rollout happened and the implementation, and just kind of gathering that sort of anecdotal data, one of the things that was important to us with this was to lay that foundation before the release of the document, before we adopted a new policy. How can we set the foundation of that professional learning, getting people the skills that they need to actually implement it when it's put into their hands versus putting it into their hands and then hoping for a great implementation? And so we've spent the last two years really focused at our middle and high school levels of providing that additional support, meeting monthly with our restorative community leads, ensuring that they had a community of practice that was strong and access to different restorative work and restorative teams and different departments across the district, such as our Counseling and Guidance Department, Equity and Belonging, MTSS, all laying the foundation before placing a new policy in their hands. So that's definitely something that's been important to us, it's work we plan on continuing to do, we have a very strong restorative justice practice team. But like I said, the beauty of this is that it's not just the work of one department, it's really a collaborative effort, so we definitely plan to continue that work.
Trustee Baldas, and then Trustee Wires Payne, and then Trustee Baso.
All right, thank you all for the work that you were doing. I want to say, I think this definitely is a step in the right direction. My concern mainly is in holding staff and administrators accountable to this, because I've had my own instances, I've spoke with a lot of students that say they have experiences on campus where disciplinary action is taken, and the staff will write it up differently than how it actually went down, or the staff might be overspending. So do we have a plan or anything in place to go back and hold the staff and administrators accountable? And if not, can we plan on doing this?
I guess that's in the title of our department. You know, we really can only, I mean, on the accountability side for the oversight is when it comes to us for recommendation for expulsion. So again, we're analyzing the evidence itself, whether it meets the offense, also the prior interventions that have been taken. And so on that level, I think there's more attention to it to ensure consistency, and I think our outcomes over the last year do reflect that. I can't speak, I guess, to us having direct oversight over every suspension, but...
I want to add to that, too. I think part of my motivation in designing the document in the way that it was designed was really to make it something that students could easily understand. And so when we talk about accountability for the adults in the system, the first step, in my opinion, is making sure that our students can read it, understand it, and have access to it. And so when they see those discrepancies, they can come to Shaw's team or an adult or a parent or family member and say, you know, hey, I'm seeing in print that this is what should be happening, it's not what happened, what can we do from here?
I do, can I interject for a second? What I, what I'd like to see here, and Trustee Baldas, I think you bring up a really good point, is there's three different things that are going to have to work together, right? This restorative policy, as Ebony just outlined, is more reader-friendly and really wanted to make sure that students are able to read it. The second piece is what James is working on with the Communications Department, to be able to communicate with students directly. So that's an avenue where we can actually say, like, this is the policy, this is what should be followed. And then there's the reporting structure that those interns worked with Shaw. So this is where you start to see, like, the work that's being done isn't work that's in silos, it's actually work in service of. So I actually think all of those three components working together will get closer to what you're seeking, and I, and I understand what you're saying, and I agree with it. So I think just making sure that those three mechanisms are working together would address some of your concern, and the beginnings of it, of course.
Definitely. I, I really like how it's becoming more reader-friendly for students. I will say, currently, it does feel as if, I've never seen anything in relation to this. I feel like if there's any disciplinary action, it seems almost hidden from staff and administration. So I would be very comfortable moving forward if we mandated that every time disciplinary action or restorative action is taken, that this be presented in front of the students, in front of the parents and the families, because if that was mandated, then I'd feel like it would be shared to the students and that true accountability could be had. We're voting on this, so could I propose that as an amendment to mandate that or going forward?
So you are, you're, in essence, this would be a substitute motion? So what you would like, what would you like to add to it?
Just that one restorative action or disciplinary actions are taken, that this has to be provided to students and their families to specifically dictate that if you cause property damage, it says here that you get this action.
So what I would say is, at what level would you like to, I mean...
I think just provided in...
But I mean, at the suspension level or the expulsion level?
So I will say, at the, at the suspension level, so when we're looking at the different levels, when a suspension is given to a student, that is something that's required to be actually handed to, not the restorative discipline policy, but a document that states those offenses, so the student and the family needing to know what offense did the student commit that aligns with, you know, what is stated in the actual policy. So that's something we currently have. We also have the requirement that our staff shares their site discipline plan with families and students within the first week of school, and so that's another way that our families get access to those documents. We also plan on making this very public, so this will be a document that remains on our website, that's something that can be there easily accessible for students and families consistently.
Yeah, no, I, I really, I appreciate all that, and I think that's amazing work. I just feel that even if it is on a website, or even if it is sent out, that people aren't truly going to look at it, they're not going to see it. So unless it's provided in front of you before action is taken, I don't think that students will see it or that they'll truly understand.
So let me just say, I don't actually think there's an additional motion on this thing, I think if we just communicate to the superintendent, from what I understand, if there's a suspension or an expulsion, that in addition to the documents describing, we could also provide this a, maybe not the full policy, but the sort of top line of the policy.
Well, I think we can, I love that suggestion. I think the more times people see it and have access to it, the better. We're actually revising the report on suspension, which is that document that we need to provide to parents in the instance that there is a suspension. So I think... So I think we can work on adding parts of this document or the document in the entirety to part of that so that as our administrators are reaching out to families to make them aware of the suspension, they're also providing portions of this document that are relevant.
Okay, definitely. That.
I don't think we have to amend the motion, but the superintendent understands the gist, gist of it. And you'll, you'll return next time and, and let us know how, how you implemented the suggestion that's coming from the DIAS. Okay.
Yeah, perfect. Yeah. And thank you all so much for your work.
Okay. Now trustee Wires Payne and then trustee Bazo.
Thank you. And again, I, I must say that I'm totally impressed with the work that you all have done. And it's something that we've needed for a long time. I like the comprehensiveness of it with the, the legal strategies there. The information will be on the web. It will be shared right up front. It's available when the student is at the front end even in difficulty. You share the consequences, go over it with them at that point. I mean, I'm just totally impressed with this initial step. Also recognize that you'll have to make some adjustments as you go forward because that's what correction is about. But to lay it out in such a clean fashion so that everyone, from the kindergarten all the way up to the 12th grader, understands what our policies are. And not only to share it on the web and so forth, but to be able to share it with the SSC, to share it with the site PTAs, the committees onsite, everybody, so that we do a blitz community-wide. This is our policy. You want to know? Go online. It's not, some people say this is a mystery because one person was treated one way and another, one was treated another way. There's one idiosyncratic difference in here about different treatment for special education students. We do have laws governing that that are different from the gen ed population. So that's something that students, when they're comparing treatments, they need to recognize that, you know, there may be something going on that we can't address. But I like your idea Ebony of, of overdoing it, give them an extra copy during that time. And hopefully schools are listening and that they will want to do this. Because I've had people in the community that say to me that very thing, you know, that my child was treated differently and so forth. But if it's there on the web, we can sit down and go over it with, together, go over it with the school or whatever. It's not a mystery. It's right there. And you know, your child knows, we shared it with you. It's a public document. I, I just think that you've done a good job. And I'm looking forward to some kind of report in the future about how many this and that and what you've done and comparing and all the interator reliability, things going on, et cetera. Because I know it will be good. Thank you.
Seems, seems like you may have picked up a vote there. Trustee Bazo.
Thank you, President Peterson. And thank you, I'd like to echo my colleagues' comments about just the emphasis on better access and resources and training and not just doing the same thing over and over again when it's, appears to obviously not be working. So thank you for all your work on that and I think that's so important. I did, and I know we talked about this a little bit when you guys presented during our one-on-ones, but I wanted to talk a little bit about more, or find out a little bit more about engaging with parents and community and what that looks like. Because although we discussed it, I didn't see too much of it in the slides. For example, not only for the individual who's going through the restorative, you know, that process, but if there's a student that was on the receiving end of some type of behavior, we also have those parents that, you know, are a lot of times up in arms and I can't blame them sometimes. And, you know, one of the elementary schools, one of the parents actually called the police. So I just, the ways that we're helping those parents too, so we don't get to those points where they're feeling like they don't have support through the schools and, you know, what are we doing to communicate, I think both, both parties, it's important. Of course, we want to work with that student, but also the other students, if it's a classroom or, you know, if it's on the playground, whatever. Are we making sure that we're pulling those parents into, or family members if it's not a parent? Just to make sure they're, they feel like they're being heard as well and what, kind of what that looks like.
Absolutely. And I think that's something that we've consistently heard over the last five years is that you're investing a lot of resources and energy into a student who offends. What about me and my child, right? And so you'll see throughout the document, one of the things that was really important to us that we heard over and over again was lacking, was the notification for those parents. So when something has happened to my child, I didn't even know what happened until my, my kid came home and was sharing with me, you know, this happened and something happened with that kid and they went and talked to that kid. And so that is embedded throughout the document in the, I'll find a page here for you. But if you look at like level one, which is on page 11 of the document, when you look at the steps to take when a student performs a particular behavior, as we go up in those levels and we see a greater need for parents and families to be aware of something that's happened, maybe it's not at the level one where a student might have not come to class prepared with material or there's not a student, another student who was impacted by a behavior. But as we start looking towards level two and level three, definitely, we've, we've put in there specifically and called that out. These are behaviors for which a parent of the student who was impacted also needs to be made aware within the first 24 hours. So that's something that we've definitely considered and taken feedback from our parents and families. The other piece is that in addition to creating support plans for the students who are offending or exhibiting certain behaviors that are harmful, towards the end of the document in the appendices, you'll see a safety plan that is designed to be shared with students and families that have been impacted by behaviors in an attempt to create that safety and work towards repairing harm for those students as well. So that's definitely something that we've heard and that we've accounted for in the updates of the document.
And I guess I was just, take it one more step further, like maybe at a principal chat or something, couldn't we be proactive and say, hey, if this happens in your classroom, so parents know ahead of time? Because I'd rather know upfront than after my kid gets hit or whatever. But like having it more, the whole school and having that, you know, transparency and accountability and having that information available kind of before, maybe, you know, hopefully this won't happen to your student, but if it does, this is process.
Vice President Barrera.
Yeah, thank you, President Peterson, and thank you so much Ebony and Shaw for leading this work. And I, I know as Ebony mentioned at the beginning, this is, what you're presenting to us tonight is work that's been done with many, many people and many, many stakeholders, leading to this point. So I just want to make sure that we've got a little context for where we are tonight. This is an incredibly important presentation that you're making and an incredibly important moment in our district, even though it's not getting the attention, you know, that we might have had several years ago. And the, the basic concept around restorative practices, you know, I think of even before the policy in 2020, going back years before that, incidents happening at different schools in our district and a kind of a, an understanding on the part of the school district leadership that we have a basic choice, which is when we have behavior that is harmful, when we have people who are victimized by behavior that's harmful, we can either accelerate the process of students frankly going into the criminal justice system or we can educate our students. And what's our job, you know, as a school district? And so the idea that conflict or, you know, behavior that can be harmful, that in the same way that students have to learn how to read and learn how to do math, students need to learn how to get to a point of respectfully, you know, being in relationship with other students and with people in a, in a community. But that's, that's learned behavior that as an education system, we've got a responsibility to teach. And I think that's kind of the underlying, you know, concept behind restorative practice. And then, you know, when this policy was adopted in 2020, our district, like most institutions around the country in the wake of George Floyd, were reflecting on where are there systemic racist practices that are going on within our system? And how do we examine those practices? And how do we commit ourselves to becoming an anti-racist institution? And among those obvious, you know, areas was the disproportionate discipline expulsion, suspension of students of color. And the development of the 2020 policies came at a time of honest reflection on the part of this district, but was also implemented at a time when students were coming back to in-person school, coming out of COVID. And so maybe the most challenging time, you know, in, in, in our district of students adjusting back, you know, to being in, in, in-person relationship. And what I appreciate so much about this work is that what you're doing is in no way backing away from the core values that are underneath restorative practices, are in no way backing off from the core reflection of a commitment to moving this district forward as an anti-racist institution. But what you're saying is, if we're going to implement those core values, we have to do it well. And this is what this is getting at. And, and I know that the, you know, that the reaction, especially in those, you know, first couple of years coming back from COVID, was, you know, there was an assumption that what this means is there, there's no consequences for certain behavior and, and we're creating chaos on our campuses. And I know students, parents and educators were feeling overwhelmed by how do we, you know, how do we, how do we implement these policies? And it would have been very easy for you and for the leadership of this district to actually back away from our core values and say, well, this doesn't work. And what you're saying is, no, this has to work, but there's a way to, to get better and better and build the capacity in the district to do this well. And that's a reflection of where we're at tonight. And we know that a few years from now, hopefully we'll look, look up and we'll say, we've done this better. And certainly by, you know, certain metrics, you know, number of expulsions, you know, we've had success. But by other metrics, we know that we've got work yet to do. But we're not backing away from, you know, what we know is, is that, you know, restorative practices is about learning and is about education. And that a commitment to equity means that we honestly address where we've got systemic issues, you know, in our district. We're not backing away from that. We're just getting better at it. And I appreciate, you know, this work.
Thank you, Vice President Barrera. Trustee Cruz.
Thank you, President Peterson. And wow, this is an incredible presentation. Thank you so much. I really appreciate how much effort was put into finding and explaining the infractions within these levels, especially for us students, so we can educate ourselves in these disciplinary policies. So I have a quick suggestion and I may be wrong, but I'm pretty sure at least once a year, most high school administrations hold a policy assembly, right? With their students to talk about their school policies. And I think if this presentation could be taken, make it more student-friendly and presented to these, to students at these assemblies, that way we can ensure that they've seen these resources and know where to find it. I think that would be a great step towards effective communication.
I love that idea. And I'm wondering if that's you volunteering to be on this, developing a student-friendly version committee?
I will pass that opportunity to the next two student board members.
All right. Thank you. I love that. I appreciate that feedback.
Thank you so much. I'll just, I'll just say a couple of things here. One, I want to reiterate what folks have said already, particularly superintendent, which is, in a way, it's unfortunate that we present restorative discipline in isolation from all the things we do to establish the baseline, the behavioral, social, cultural, school climate baseline to which we restore to. Because it makes it seem as though the main part of the story is the discipline, when the discipline's hopefully a very small portion of what we're doing to foster that, that baseline that we would restore to in, in the event that there is a departure from that baseline. So, you know, I don't know, it's almost like it would be great to see, for just communicating to the public at some point, some sort of a workshop where we talk about the totality of the work we're doing as a district with our BSR team and our, our discipline team and the, the supports we provide to students that are, you know, from the MTSS perspective, the tier two and tier three supports we're providing to students who may be struggling behaviorally. So with the understanding that this is a small, a small part of it that we used to restore to that baseline we've established, I, I want to commend you for responding. It is very good as a board member to see staff responding to the community, to community input, to staff input, to student input and to board input and seeing that change in real time, which we are seeing. In terms of the biggest, when I came on, the biggest challenge I saw from site leaders is unclear instruction with regard to cumulative misconduct. So you had students, and we would see it in closed session, where you would have five years of the same behavior and, and, and parents are frustrated, other students are frustrated. And I'm very happy to see such clear guidance on the cumulative aspect. Before, if you didn't do the big five, it was just, you know, Groundhog Day. And I also want, I am very appreciative of the integration with Power School at, at the lowest level of referrals, so we can get a sort of a picture of what's happening. Behavioral student oftentimes when it gets to us, it's very unclear what, what's going on, what's happening. Because a whole side of that referral in class and onsite referrals were not getting registered and we had no real idea about the context of that behavior. I also want to point out, you know, we frequently, the concern, three years ago to Richard's point, was around our focus on reducing suspensions and expulsions. But the main reason we want to reduce those is not because we're commies or something. It's because they're not behaviorally effective. And you could have a hypothetical district which at each level just punched the kid in the face. And the reason why we don't do anything like that is because it's not behaviorally effective. And so the, the, what I, what I'm, what I want to emphasize on this, and I, and I think your report captures is, these are research-based effective approaches at each level. The, the response, and that is the nature of justice. The response is proportionate to the disruption and to the behavior. And I also want to talk, just the last thing I'll say is, it's very, I, I want to respect the work you're doing because it is that heart of real decision-making and leadership is to create a system that balances goods against goods and bads against bads. It's very easy, the public oftentimes sees, I mean, naturally, when you're involved in the system in a disciplinary process, you see goods weighted against bads. And it's like, oh, no. But, but what you're doing here is, we see a situation in which, on the one hand, this is a student who is struggling. On the other hand, they are, they have perpetrated a behavior that may have serious consequences for other students. And you've got to weigh those two things against one another. And one of the things that I think we are, we don't talk about is that there is, I assume it's nationwide, but there, when we do not get a handle on the behavior, help to get the supports the student need, they have collateral impacts on their peers, which can be profound. If you have two or three students on a, on a campus that are struggling, it could, you might see that in the CAS scores for the whole campus. And the student has a right to a, to justice in relation to the consequence of the behavior. But those other students, their peers have a, have a right to a safe, supportive learning environment. And that is a very hard thing to balance and I appreciate the work you've done to balance that. If I can say, you have been so good about responding to the, the input of this board and to the community and our stakeholders. The one thing that I would love to have either in a subsequent report or if we had a workshop environment where we talked about the totality of the work we're doing, one of the most heartbreaking things we see on a board is a student who starts struggling in fourth, fifth grade and keeps struggling all the way and doesn't get to us until 11th grade when they commit one of the big five. All of the time, we're thinking as a board, and I know the superintendent as well and leadership team, All of the time, we're thinking as a board, and I know the superintendent as well, and leadership team, how do we get the supports we can see a child is just screaming for before they're expelled? And so that is something I would love us to talk about, the other end of a discipline. The reason why suspension or expulsion is at all behavioral effective, which in and of itself it is not, but it's because at the point of expulsion, we get them the the high dosage interventions that they need at ALBA or at some other site. So how can we talk in in this environment, in terms of restorative practices? How can we talk about how to get these struggling students the supports they need before they get expelled? Three, not just months before they get expelled, but years before they get expelled. So I really appreciate, that's my question is really, how do we start thinking about getting them those supports before they get expelled?
Well, I mean, at some point, you can do some regression analysis on it and take a look at what's happening with the students. We've got some data folk out there. We know how to do that kind of thing. But there ought to be a point. Hopefully, we'll start collecting data and have reports. And then we can look back at the data and say, given this pattern, this is what's going to happen. What are we doing to intervene? And we'll start getting ongoing reports early on rather than at the other end of the spectrum. I I think that's kind of what you're talking about.
And just to add one more thing is, you can't really do that with just the student. I mean, this has to involve the whoever they're living with. I mean, it's it's a whole child thing. It can't just be like discussing with the student. It really needs to be community engagement as well.
I was just going to chime in and repeat what Dr. Wyatt Hurst Payne shared is that I think the first step in that is really having a strong data collection tool, a team that we now have. And so looking at beyond just the the sort of broad numbers around suspension and expulsion, which give us a short looking back piece of data around student and student experience, being able to look more comprehensively at data, looking at student experience data, how are they feeling when they're in the classrooms? How do they feel when they're at school? Are they connected to adults? What is their attendance like? What is their academic outcome in literacy and in math? So we want to take a broad look at all of those things because this touches, as you shared, all of those pieces. And we should be able to see outcomes in all of those areas based on the work that we're doing to build those strong foundations. But I think having that that piece of data when we're looking at incorporating the Power School tools in here and collecting that data and inputting the data is really the first step to being able on our end to look at and disaggregate and and drill down into that data to make meaningful and informed changes to the work that we do.
I'm sorry, I want to say something. And this is where I want to connect as well because this is not just a silo, right? I know we're talking about student data and data systems, but we also are are studying wellness. And that has to do with mind, body, community, and relationship, which has a lot to do with what happens or what even causes a child to be in conflict with another child or or at school. So that's one. And then we're also studying motivation. So I'm actually seeing like the beauty of all of these components kind of coming together into working towards exactly what you're describing. It's just the infrastructure that we were building. And now like the, yeah, I'm just seeing the togetherness that's coming. And it's happening now. So I'm actually really excited listening to this presentation going, all of the pieces are starting to move in the right direction.
Shaw.
And, yeah, I think specifically, to your point, Cody, with seeing that history and almost the only tool to remove the student or get them the additional support or attention that they need or environment was, it seems, historically through the expulsion. So that's been something that's very lively conversation. We, we do have alternative schools. We have some continuation schools. And we've been working with ALBA and families for, we're limited based on ed code and certain policy of, we need parent approval on certain placement issues, but working with them as if they're identifying it too, then we don't need to go through an expulsion to get that student there, to get them the services. And so we actually have meetings amongst different departments and leadership coming up this summer about potentially piloting other specialized programs, which we're, you know, hoping will also fill some of those gaps. But we are looking at the policies we have and the programs that we have and finding ways where, you know, it may just be that school itself isn't the right environment for this student, and there's another place. So the placement issue is something that comes up a lot and we're working on. So and the other thing, sorry, just to get back to what you were talking about with the baseline, I think something that was new to me coming into the district, expulsion doesn't mean they're out of the district. And I don't know if everybody understands that, right? So a permissive expulsion is one semester. A mandatory expulsion is one year. And that student has a right to come back to the comprehensive site. So I think that's where also, you know, it's not just that work on the front end to try and avoid it, but ultimately, this student is going to have to reintegrate back into the environment. And getting rid of them, expulsion doesn't do that, right? So eventually, whatever the discipline or interventions are, the goal is we have to have them back to that baseline, as you would say.
Thank you, Shaw. Well, having exhausted board discussion at long last, we appreciate the report. We will move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All remaining trustees, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. Thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation. All right. Moving right along. I won't say at a quick pace, but a pace. We will now consider items F1 through F6 related to collective bargaining. Is there a motion on these items? Trustee Hazen with the motion. Trustee, was that a, yeah, trust. Why don't I get a motion, why don't I get a motion from Richard? You, okay, all right, without voting, yeah. That's a second from Trustee Baldus. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Stoltz, any speakers on this item? Okay. With that, we will, do any trustees have any comments on this item? Trustee Hazen with the comment.
Just a quick one. So I'm really excited and happy to see the leadership coaching position here. And I'm wondering if, I mean, we know this is a best practice about the leadership coaching and communities of practice and very goal-aligned for us. And I'm wondering if if this is reflected in the LCAP. And maybe, I don't know if it's a question for this or a question for for LCAP. So maybe when the, if anyone's prepared to answer it now or or then.
Superintendent.
I have not seen it in the LCAP, but I'm pretty sure we put it in there as a strategy to help move our goals and guardrails. So I'm going to hold until I'm going to verify and I'll come back.
All right. We'll hold the question until the LCAP consideration. Are there any additional comments? All right. Seeing no comments from the public and having exhausted comments from the board here, we will move to a vote. Trustees, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. All right. We will now consider items G1 and G2, the 2025-26 Board of Education stipends and memberships. Is there a motion to approve items G1 and G2? Trustee Cruz, Trustee Bazza with a second. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Stoltz, do we have any speakers on this item? Would any of my board colleagues care to opine on this item? Okay. Seeing no additional comments, we will move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other trustees, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. We will now consider item H1, the second reading and adoption of the 2025-26 Local Control and Accountability Plan. A public hearing and first reading of this item was conducted on June 10, 2025. Dr. Bagula, please introduce the item.
And just to follow up, I hadn't seen the coaching in the LCAP, and it's not in the LCAP, but it should be. So thanks for that feedback right now. Thank you, President Peterson. Trustees, tonight you have the second reading of San Diego Unified's 25-26 Local Control and Accountability Plan, which is before you for final approval. This LCAP reflects our continued shift toward deeper alignment with the board's goals and guardrails through student outcomes-focused governance model. It is meant to be more than a compliance document. It should be a living reflection of our values, our commitments, and the outcomes we aim to achieve for every student. The version you receive incorporates revisions recommended by our partners at the county and state. More importantly, it reflects input from broader community, students, families, educators, advisory groups, and this board. This plan is stronger because of it, and it also meets the technical requirements. But here's the part that I want to make sure that I'm clear about. I, I think about the LCAP as a really important document. And I feel like I worked for two years making sure that the SBSA was a meaningful SBSA. That's why now there's mechanisms for SSCs to be able to pull financial reports and data reports by school. We also have to follow suit from the district level. Our LCAP should be very similarly written, should be very cohesive, should be very aligned. And so there's still more work for us to do. So I'm going to say that now. So whenever I read, like, yes, we met all the technical requirements, well, okay. But I want it to be a quality document, a document that we're proud of with our strategies and with all of the outcomes that we aspire to do, including to Trustee Hazen's question, the strategy that we're using to support principles is not reflected in the LCAP, and it should be. So there's more work for us to do, and I know that we will continue to do it. This plan presents multiple growth opportunities, and we're committed to learning, improving, and building toward the system that our students deserve. With that, we respectfully submit the 25-26 Local Control and Accountability Plan for your approval as presented. I'm here to answer any questions. And I know Marissa Allen and Nicole DeWitt are also available.
Thank you, Dr. Bagula. Do I have a motion on this item? Trustee Wyatt Hurst Payne with a motion. Trustee Bazza with a second. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Stoltz, are there any speakers on this item? Okay, no speakers on the LCAP. Okay. Do any trustees have any questions or comments on this item? Trustee Hazen.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Bagula, for highlighting some of the work left to do with the LCAP. I think, you know, I voiced this at the first read and have, you know, shared some feedback with the team over the last few weeks. And I think, of course, you know, this meets our requirements, you know, from a compliance standpoint, and I'm prepared to to support this. But I think it still lacks measurable actions and alignment of the actions with district goals and SBSAs in each goal area. And I do want to say, I think this is with the exception of Goal IV, which I think is particularly clear, strategic, and measurable, and could be used as an example for the other goals. And I'm wondering, Dr. Bagula, if it would be possible, since I know the work is ongoing, to really identify and clarify measurable actions aligned with our goals, if it would be reasonable, I don't know, by, you know, before the the first goal monitoring report at least, to have more specificity around these actions so that we can see the alignment? Would that be possible?
I'm actually working to construct a a plan of action for it that's aligned to my next year's superintendent evaluation as far as conscious accountability goes. And so I think that within that, I could start to try to build that in so that we're in flux together. But I'll construct that to show you.
Thank you. And I do want to just share a couple of examples, and I, you know, don't want to belabor this. But I think, you know, when I look at just the wellness section, for example, right, we know that wellness is the district's top priority. We reflected that just in the restorative discipline conversation. But really, without clear measurable indicators, it's hard to determine which of the strategies, which restorative strategies and practices are making the biggest difference and which aren't. And I think as we think about, you know, future budget years where we're going to likely have to make some some tough decisions, knowing which of these things are most moving the needle is really important. And, you know, there are things in the wellness section, for example, that say, like, expanding opportunities for physical activity. What do we mean by that? How do we know if we're doing it? What are we spending on it? Is it more staff, more programs, more time, more access? How are we measuring the expansion? And, you know, I could go through, there's a laundry list of of places where, you know, we talk about expansion, but we don't say what we mean by it. We, you know, sort of are vague about, you know, what we're planning to do. And and then I worry then that at this time next year, when we're reviewing the progress we made, we don't really know what we were trying to do in the first place. So I appreciate, Dr. Bagula, that you'll come back to us and and share more. So appreciate that, that work on conscious accountability.
Trustee Wyatt Hurst Payne.
Just one comment. And that is that I love the way the state and we have now moved to the whole business of LCAP and even the budget. Their working documents that at some point in time you have to put a pin in and then move forward. This will not stop today. It will continue. And as we move forward, hopefully, we will make adjustments and do those things. And we trust the superintendent to carry that out. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Yeah, I will just say, I think we talk sometimes in action officers about about bullet points. Where, I mean, we have a, we have a, all of us are very hooked on bullet points. But the problem with bullet points is they don't actually tell you what the structured relationship is between the various elements. They're just like, and I do get the feeling, to Trustee Hazen's point, in spite of the dramatic improvements on the old LCAP, which I did not even understand how we were cutting up the world. It was like I had to memorize the categories because they were so not intuitive. So I very much appreciate it. But some of this LCAP is still just like a series of bullet points without a clear understanding what the structural relationships or what the prioritization is. So I would reiterate that the work that needs to be done to sort of make sense and make meaning of the interrelationships between the various points. So I think that's a valid point. With that, we have had board comments on this beautiful document. And we have no further comment from the public. We will now move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All remaining board members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. All right. We will now consider item H2, the second reading and adoption of the 2025-26 District Budget and Resolution to Identify the Amount of Budget Solutions Needed in the Subsequent Two Years. A public hearing and first reading of this item was conducted on June 10, 2025. Is there a I see you coming to the floor. Would you like to give a a presentation?
Yes, I have, I'm going to introduce her, if that's okay.
That's fine, yes. We, I mean, yes.
So for this next item, we have the, we have the second reading and final adoption of the proposed 25-26 district budget. Initially, we were not going to have a presentation or any comments since nothing has changed following the first reading presentation. But I'm going to call up Senior Financial Director Amy Shackelford to share some breaking news related to the state budget that we received today.
So by late breaking, we just received it a few hours ago. So it was announced today that the governor and the legislature have come to an agreement on the final budget act for 2025. The trailer bill was published today. And of course, it still needs to be voted on and signed by the governor by July 1. And so we are still reviewing the impacts of the proposed budget agreement. But overall, it does look very similar to the May revise, which is very good news to the district. Final impacts will be incorporated into the 45-day budget. And so we will be back at the August board meeting to provide final updates and the impact to the budget. So just to review a couple of the highlights or the main points of the budget agreement, the first item being the COLA. So it does fully fund the COLA at 2.3%. As far as the deferrals go, the agreement does include a $1.9 billion deferral. So that is just up slightly from the May revise. This is actually more in alignment with the May revise. If you recall, the legislature had proposed an $850 million deferral. The deferral is really cash impacting for us. And so at the end of the next fiscal year, we will just have to adjust our borrowing of cash, but it doesn't impact our budget. The next area is on the Prop 98 reserves. So the budget agreement does fully deplete the remaining balance in the reserve account. The legislature had originally proposed to add a $650 million deposit that would The legislature had originally proposed to add a $650 million deposit that would come from that Prop 98 true-up, but the way that the agreement stands is there would be no additional deposit, that balance would be fully expended at the end of 2526. The next area, which is also very good news, is the Student Success and Professional Block Grant. Two weeks ago, you call the legislature had proposed to drop that $1.7 billion down to $500 million, so that would have been a loss of almost 70%. Fortunately for us, the final agreement is to go back to the $1.7 billion, so that's roughly $27 million of one-time funding that the district should be receiving. The next area is the TK add-on. This was a, an area that was of much debate ever since the LAO had announced in the fall that districts didn't need to receive additional funding to go to 10 to 1, which districts quickly agreed, yes, we do. And so the final agreement does align, again, with the May revise, so we would be receiving approximately $5,500 per TK add-on, and so that is that $11 million, of which $7 million is already included in the budget that you see this evening. Another area, which is also fantastic news, is the Expanded Learning Opportunity Program. Little bit of a shocking news with the legislative plan that was proposing to only implement a 50% funding for that first year. What we'll see in the final agreement is that they are fully implementing that plan effective July 1, and so that is fantastic news for our families because we are a rate one now, and we will have the additional funds to be able to expand those programs at the beginning of the school year. And then the last area, which continues to be an area of debate, is the Prop 98 true-up. And so what we see included right now is actually $1.9 billion, which has gone up from the $1.3 billion that was included in the May revise. Just a reminder, that final dollar amount won't be calculated until the fall because we do have to wait for ti, final tax receipts because of the LA County and the wildfires, and so what we'll see included in the January governor's proposed budget in January, sorry, is the plan and that final number of how, his proposal and how to allocate those funds. And so those are the highlights of what was included in the state budget. The last item I did want to talk about and cover was on the resolution that was attached to the board agenda this evening. You'll note in the last paragraph, there is a typo on the fiscal year, it said 26-25. It's supposed to say 2627, and so the resolution states that the board is agreeing to provide the list of budget solutions for the 2627 year by first interim in December of this year. That's that, I will turn it back to President Patterson.
Thank you so much. We are going to, I need a motion on this thing. Wow, look at the sharing, Dr. Wires Payne with the motion. Do you have a second? Vice President Barrera with the second. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Stoltz, are there any public comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll move to board discussion. Do any of my colleagues have any comments on this?
Yes, yes, yes.
I think we have a comment here.
And yes.
Trustee Wires Payne.
This is a whole point Richard and I've been saying. It's like Jello, and I just finished telling you guys this. It's, you come in, we don't know, it seems like the sky is falling, and then we get this report tonight, so, hmm, if I were in church, I'd say hallelujah, but since I'm not, taking it out.
Right. It's the Church of Whitehurst Payne here. I'm a believer. Vice President Barrera, did you have your hand up or no? No, okay, sorry. All right. Oh, trustee Hazen.
Yeah, and just trying, so, great news and really appreciate all of the advocacy that went into this, and that the legislature and governor, everybody did the right thing for our kids and schools. I'm wondering, in terms of like plus to the bottom line, I was trying to sum up all of the different things that you just shared, and I know I left the room for two seconds, what, what is the, so compared to where we were yesterday, how much more funding will we have in the 2526?
Yeah, so for the 45-day budget in August, we would see the, the one, hopefully, the, and we haven't seen the final dollar amount, so these are all, again, just projections and estimates. With the unrestricted side of the House, it would be the additional TK dollars, so we'd included $7 million. Our estimate is 11, so we would see an uptick of $4 million of revenue, but we've already budgeted, we've been at 10 to 1, so this would just be offsetting those ongoing expenses. On the restricted side is where you would see the student success professional development grant, the $27 million. Those are discretionary in nature, even though they have outlined priorities of the legislature, and the ELOP funds would be on the restricted side as well. There are some programs that would help provide some relief to the budget, such as the extended school year and areas like that, that could be utilizing those ELOP funds. And then the one area I didn't mention is the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant, that was $5 million. That is still in, that did make it to the final budget, that would, while it's on the restricted side, it still has flexibility that would help us on, on the unrestricted side. So the unrestricted budget is only going to change on the revenue side from those additional TK dollars, the, of that additional $4 million, and everything else will be on the restricted side.
And then specifically for the ELOP, which I'm particularly excited about, so are we anticipated, anticipating the $36 million that we had seen at May revise, which would then kick in at the beginning of the year? And do we, I have questions, but I guess I, so we expect that we'll be able to start utilizing those dollars, not fully implement universally, but begin implementing that expanded primetime at the beginning of the school year and using those monies?
Correct.
And then because this budget isn't just about next year, but the next few years, while I'm really excited that things have turned out more positively than we anticipated just a few weeks ago, hours ago, I'm wondering, what are the concerns, and Amy, I don't know for you or for the superintendent, concerns we have about addressing the $138 million deficits we're showing in, in the out-years, right? We've, and I know President Patterson has spoken to this previously, right, we've implemented the SERB, we've done the attrition models. Are we confident that we have sufficient strategies available to balance budgets in the out-years without limiting the impact we seek to have on kids?
So I'll begin. It is going to be more challenging. We've done a lot of the low-hanging fruit solutions in the past. We are starting earlier this year to help with the 2627 year. There are going to be some challenging decisions that we're going to have to be looking at because of the $138 million, and ideally, as I mentioned at the last board meeting, the more that we can focus on the ongoing solutions and not utilizing one-time solutions, that would offset the 2728 gap. Right now, I'm very confident that we will have the solutions developed and ready to go. They are going to be challenging, they are going to be cutting deeper than the items that we had to implement this year yet.
Trustee Hazen, I know that our team is going to be having this conversation, and we're still going to be rooted in our values. However, I have not had the chance to sit and talk to the team after today's news, so I'm hesitant to really go into any sort of details about it because I haven't talked to them yet.
Okay, and then lastly, only because I noticed that LA Unified in their budget included a contingency amount of about 0.25% to cover unanticipated but potential cuts to federal funding, have, what is our strategy in response to potential cuts? Have we set anything aside? How are we planning to address that, should that happen in the coming months?
So our budget does not include a contingency. As we covered in the previous meetings, we do receive about 6% of our funding is from federal. It's mainly the Food Services Program, which is not one of those areas that is anticipated to be reduced, and the other large portion is the Title I, also not anticipated to be reduced. We do have smaller dollars on the Impact Aid, which we haven't received any notification if they would be reducing, and then some of the other grants or funding sources are competitive grants, like our electric buses and MSAP grants, but as far as the ongoing, we have not set aside any contingency because those areas weren't currently listed to be eliminated. I know we have some small dollars on the migrant ed and adults that we would be covering, but those were a couple hundred thousand dollars, my understanding.
Special education as well.
Child nutrition is not...
Special education.
Special education, yeah, we haven't received any information that they would be reducing the funding. We would just, we would be continuing to have our ongoing challenge based on the shortfall between the state and the federal budgets.
Got it. So for those, you said migrant education, some of those other smaller dollar amounts, we would have to make those cuts?
Yeah, we would look at other restricted opportunities that we could shift those fundings around to utilize, to cover.
Thank you.
All right. We've had no comment from public and board discussion. With that, we will move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other board members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. All right. We will now consider items H4 and H5, Projected Debt Service Schedules for Proposition S, YYU, and issue and issuance and sale of said bonds. Is there a motion on items? We don't have a presentation on this, is there a motion?
It's actually H3 and 4. That was a typo in my thought.
Oh, that, okay, sorry. Oh, my script there, items H3 and 4, we had a late-breaking change. Is there a motion to approve items H3 and H4? We have a motion from Vice President Barrera and a second from trustee Whitehurst Payne. Ms. Stoltz, are there any public speakers on this item? No. Would any of my colleagues care to opine on these items? No. Seeing none, we will move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other board members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. We will now consider items, the actual H5, and H6, Adoption of Annual Resolutions for the Conduct of 2025-26 District Business and Approval of the Annual Proposition 28 Report. Is there a motion to approve items H5 and H6? Trustee Cruz with the motion. Do I have a second? Trustee Hazen with a second. We have a motion and a second. Marty, are there any speakers on this item? No. Okay. Would any of the board members care to discuss this item? Okay, seeing none, we will move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other board members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. We will now consider items I1 through I61. The superintendent's consent agenda, consent items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion followed by a vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the board, member of the public, or staff requests specific items be removed for the consent, from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Any agenda item removed will be voted upon following the motion to approve the consent agenda. Do any of the board members care to poll any of these items? Trustee Wires Payne would like to poll 21. Okay. We've polled item 21. Has any member of the public signed up on any of these items? No. So, given that, do we have a motion on the superintendent's consent agenda except for item I21? We have a motion from trustee Hazen and a second from trustee Baldis. We, again, do not discuss consent agenda items, thus the consent portion. We will therefore move to a vote on all items except for I21. Student trustees, please vote. All other board members, please vote. Items I1 through I61, except for I21, pass unanimously with student trustees concurring. We will now move to item I21. Do we have a motion on I21? Do I have a motion for the sake of discussion? A motion from Vice President Barrera and a second from trustee Basel. We now have a motion on the floor. It was pulled by trustee Wires Payne, who I believe will now provide her comment.
My concerns on this particular item do not deal with any personalities or any of that. I'm just concerned about the process. I have said repeatedly, and this isn't just now, it's been years, several superintendents, that we need to take a look at our central office level of support to all departments, to the board, to the superintendent, to the, turns out, legal counsel, all the departments, that we need to have an independent study to look at what levels they should be at with all the factors considered, and not by anyone in the system. I've talked independently to folks who are out there in corporation, and they want to know, you know, are they interchangeable or not, or whatever. We just need someone to do it without any bias or even the appearance of, I'm not accusing anyone of bias, but we need to look at it independently, the factors involved, whether or not there's something that should be modified. So I'm, I'm a vote on a no on this, because this is the one issue that I've seen over and over and over again under several superintendents, not one, not two, but three superintendents, and I just wish that we would get it right in the sense that we know somebody from the outside who looked at it, said this is what it should be, and we will adhere to that. Folks can accept or not accept, but it's not from anybody inside the system. It's just my opinion, and you're all are free to vote the way you want to vote, that's fine.
So I believe the motions were made in order to allow discussion of the item. I, would you, would you care to make a substitute motion requesting this returned to us in a different form? I see Superintendent Bagula's hand up.
I would like to ask if Christine Morsehead is available or Ondra Green is also available, because this is actually a really tricky one here. There's a lot of cleanup of hiring assistants that needs to be done, lots of, and I'm going to say this, lots of unfair practices in the past over many superintendents, by the way, of their assistants, and I'm trying to right the wrong and make it a just process. I also agree with Dr. Whitehurst Payne. We actually sought out a couple of companies to do an independent study, but they were charging over $100,000, and I was not going to do that, especially when we were making cuts in central office. But I do agree that it needs to be done. We're trying to find a more affordable third-party, like you said, unbiased, because there is a lot of wrongs that I have to right, and I'm going to say it needs to be done. But I do want to call up, if Christine is there or if Ondra's there, if they can speak to this, please.
We have counsel and HR here in the room. Would you like to begin? First come, first served.
Is this on? Yeah, great. Hi, everybody. So I can't obviously speak to how this was done with, before I was in this current seat, but I can assure you that there is an objective process that is done by a team of very, very highly competent professionals within human resources. They are classification and compensation experts. So any request for a new job classification within San Diego Unified is expected to go through that team. Now, that being said, I know that there are cases from the past where that didn't occur, so there may be some inequities from there, but I can assure you that while I'm in this seat, all positions go through this team. They're done independently, they're done objectively, without regard for who's asking for them. for them. And so they are studying the nature, the scope, the responsibility, the oversight, all of the different factors that go into assessing the classification first of the position. And then they are using our salary rules, they're looking at our salary grades for all of our classified positions, and they're making sure that the new classification that they're creating is graded appropriately in light of the other positions. So that is the process that they are working through. I also want to share that what Dr. Bagula and what Dr. Whitehurst Payne pointed out about the need for the overall analysis of administrative support across the central office is currently a project that we will be, well, not currently, we're starting the process of pulling data to analyze that. That's something that the budget review team is looking to do as well because we realize that there are inconsistencies and potentially inequities right now. So we're taking it bit by bit, but please know that that is absolutely something that we will be doing in advance of next year and throughout the beginning of the fall and winter.
Thank you. General Counsel Green?
Sure. I'm just here in case you have questions about the function and the rationale for creating the new position. This is actually my executive assistant, and I think that some of, you know that since the Legal Assistant 2 position that she currently holds was created, my division has drastically expanded from just having a couple people in risk management and legal to having all of ICA, having risk management grow to captive insurance, taking in all of our claims administration in-house, including most recently workers' comp, and we've added safety to the risk management program. So the reason for this position, and I had no influence on what salary was assigned to it, it went through the regular HR process, we created a position description, they rated it, and that's when I saw it. But the need for this position is to account for the additional high-level duties that my current assistant is asked to do because of the size of my organization or my portion of the organization. And so I would ask that you support this. She's already doing the work. She's really fantastic. I think some of you know her. And this has been a long time in the work. So we cut a position as well last year, so she's taken on both me and the deputy general counsel, and she's really instrumental to me in helping to oversee the other departments that have been gradually added to my portion of the organization.
Thank you. Any additional comment from the board? Seeing none, we will move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. We're again voting on I21. All other board members, please vote. That motion passes with five board members, four, no. One student trustee for, one student trustee against, four other board members, four one board member against. I don't know how to reflect that in the record, but yeah. But it passes. A split vote, but it passes. Okay. Thank you. All right. So we will now, wow. Okay, we're rounding the final turn here. We will now receive public testimony on non-agenda items. Ms. Stoltz, have we received any requests for non-agenda comments? I believe we have.
Yes, we have two speakers on non-agenda. Arlene Newbarth and Genevieve, last initial Z. You each have three minutes.
San Diego Unified loves to talk about compliance, but what it doesn't talk about is how performative most of it is. Let's talk about what happens when a district confuses policy for progress. Meetings are held to check a box. Accommodations are granted but not implemented. Wellness is promoted in public while retaliation happens in private. That's not support, that's liability management. Even the simple human accommodations I asked for for my disability-related needs, like flexible scheduling and written feedback, weren't respected. I made accommodation requests based on research and my lived experience, flexible scheduling, clear communication, a break from punitive management. Not one was honored. Because in this district, if you need support, you're the problem. If you speak up, you're a liability. And if you expect dignity, you're labeled difficult. You can't weaponize policy and then ask why morale is low. You can't gaslight staff and then wonder why they burn out. You can't mandate trust. You have to earn it. It isn't earned through power. It can only be earned through principle. And this district has a long way to go.
Hello. I notified the Golden Hill K-8 School, the infection rashes and severe emotional abuse, hygiene facility denial and bullying in Ann Wittenmeyer's classroom. I witnessed the trauma-inducing environment in class myself when my brave-assured child was genuinely terrified to ask the teacher to use the bathroom. So I told the teacher we were going to the bathroom, and her response was inappropriately shocked. As we left the classroom, another classmate ran after us and grabbed my child's hand and explained that she had to go so bad but was too terrified of getting yelled at for asking. As I escorted them both to sanitation facilities and back, they told me of another classmate who peed his pants in class after repeatedly asking to use the toilets while Miss Ann repeatedly said no. I saw him after school with excrement on his jeans. I begged admin to get my kid into a safe and healthy classroom, and the only response I got from the school was talk to the teacher. October 11th, 2024, I sent an email to Golden Hill K-8 Office, quote, "I am not working in the human resources department and should not be in the position to tell a teacher that children have a right to bathroom access. That's not my job, nor should I be burdened with enforcing district regulations or California law in a situation of violation as this. This is a school's job. As a parent, I have a right to ask, request compliance with California codes without providing the labor to enforce these rules. This is beyond a parent/teacher issue. This is a student health and wellness concern. My kid has been complaining about this issue since the beginning of the year. I already voiced my concerns that my child was refused access to toilets while in school a few months ago when my kiddo was having stomach aches and painful urination, UTI's constipation from holding it in class and did not receive resolution. Parents of fourth graders tell me this was an ongoing issue last year as well," end quote. As soon as I said the words "excrement-induced infection and rashes," the school should have filed a child abuse report. I should not have been told I had to confront the person causing my child's injuries in order to escape the person causing my child's injuries. I found out the hard way that the ICA is part of the San Diego Unified School District's legal defense team. They report to legal. They do not provide child abuse reporting resources to families who report child abuse. It would be a conflict of interest for them to help a parent report the child abuse. Stop sending child abuse victims to the ICA. The delay reporting, which endangers student health, I was misled into thinking the ICA was the appropriate agency to report the injuries, and this delay caused a more severe injury on my child. This is the second year in a row in which Golden Hill K-8 children have been injured in Ann Wittenmeyer's classroom for hygiene denial. Help us." Thank you.
That concludes non-agenda comment.
All right. Thank you to both of you for taking the time to provide your comments this evening. We appreciate your input, and please know that your perspectives help us to better serve our students. Now, we have a little special occasion here. We are going to conduct a swearing-in of our 2025-2026 student board members, Ashley Ordas and Alina Wen, and administer the oath of office. Trustees Baldis and Cruz will administer the oath of office to Ashley and Alina. Let me check here. Is this when you'd like to provide your speech at this point in time? Okay. All right. You ready? Okay. We're going to slip this back in the agenda. Trustee Baldis, would you like to make some comments before we bring your colleagues up?
Sure, I would love to. Thank you, Cody. As the voice of 95,000 students, this role is never about me. It was about all of us, the students who aced every test and the ones who are just trying to make it through the day. From every school, every classroom, every student, our voice matters. At the start of my term, a mentor, also a former student board member from Scripps Ranch High School, told me something that stuck. Step out of your shoes and into the lives of every student in this district. That challenge lit a fire in me. I wasn't here to sit quietly or check a box. I was here to build something that actually represented student voice. That's why I made my mission to launch the largest student advisory board this district has ever seen. Trustee Cruz and I set a bold goal, one high school student from every school and one middle school student from each sub-district. We hit the ground running, campaigning in person, emailing over 20,000 students. We had met our goal. We brought a team of 45 students, 45 student representatives, each a window into their own campus communities. And then we listened. We met every other week diving into real issues, mental health, the vaping crisis, student homelessness, and the vital role of the performing arts. When I met with students addicted to vaping, who told me how nicotine controlled their days, I co-authored a resolution with Trustee Bazo targeting the use of nicotine products like Juul. When I visited SCPA and saw students whose entire world was built around the arts, I fought to protect VAPA programs during our budgeting crisis. When I spoke to students living in cars, showering in gym facilities, I passionately advocated for the inclusion of student housing during our Affordable Housing Workshop, even traveling to Sacramento to continue this advocacy. Real representation involves listening first. Our current political system is drowning in performative leadership. Billionaires parade as champions of the working class while moving to gut Medicare behind closed doors. We've seen what happens when decision-makers are too far removed from the people their policies affect. And that's why student voice matters. That's why I'm proud of what this board has done, to not just give students a seat at the table, but to listen and to care. I look forward to what comes next. I have no doubt that this board and the student board members who follow will build on this momentum, that they'll push boundaries, ask tough questions, and hold systems accountable. If we keep listening to the people most affected, if we keep centering students, then real lasting change is not just possible, it's inevitable. Finally, I want to thank the people who've helped me along with this journey. Dr. Bagula, I've had a lot of uncertain choices to make in my life, but supporting you as the permanent superintendent was not one of those. You have some of the most successful leadership skills I've seen in someone, and your passion to supporting the students of San Diego Unified is unmatched. I thank you for all you've done and wholeheartedly vowing student voice. Cody, I know every time you go up to emcee an event, we're all in for a world-class stand-up comedy set. Aside from your comedy, when you speak or raise points on the dice, you manage to pull us out of our work at the district and make us analyze issues at a societal level. You've taught me a lot, and I really value all of your lessons. Sabrina, I thank you for being so relatable and easy to talk to. You're so genuine, and every time you use your public health background to advocate for a student's well-being, I feel so comforted and as if you always have our best interests at heart. Sharon, I'm always so inspired how in each discussion on the board, you're able to hone the discussion in on our most marginalized students, ensuring each and every student is supported and protected, especially during these troubling times. Richard, your commitment to student voice is unmatched. I've spoken to countless students in the district, and I often hear, "You serve on the board? Do you know Richard?" I tell them yes, and they tell me they met with you about an issue, that you listened and you enacted real change. Aside from that, your knowledge of the educational system, not just in our district, but at the state and federal level truly is unmatched. I thank you for all your knowledge and commitment to bettering all student lives. Shayna, you're the most detail-oriented and prepared person that I know. To each and every board meeting, you have a full packet of questions where you pick up on small niche details that truly affect student lives. In today's day and age where members of Congress can vote on and pass budgets without reading them, we all need to role model a little more off of you. Joseph, I truly cannot have asked for a better partner in crime. From rooming together in Sacramento to getting Chipotle after board meetings, I've enjoyed every moment of this journey. Your leadership style is admirable, and I hope to see you on a presidential stage someday. Stacy, our work mom, thank you for always being there through thick and through thin. You've helped Joseph and I through countless problems, always teaching us a valuable life lesson at the end of it. You understand the inner workings and politics of this district to the highest degree, and I can't thank you enough for all you've done. The three M's. Marty, from the moment I stepped into office, you've consistently been one of the most organized and dependable people I've ever worked with. I thank you for being the go-to person if I have any questions in relation to board procedure. I hope when I go to college, I can model more off of you. Melissa, thank you for being so relatable and easy to talk to. I really appreciate how even when I submit my gas mileage reimbursement a week or two late, you don't get upset, you always stay positive. Martha, you carry so much wisdom and know this district and set out. You're the most genuine person I've ever met and is so inspiring to be around you and to hear from you. Thank you to the school police officers, district staff, and technicians, whose behind-the-scenes work, steady presence, and daily dedication make everything we do possible. The student engagement interns. Jackie, you are one of the nicest and friendliest faces at the district. When starting this job, I was low nervous, and seeing you in the office every day helping us get on our feet was very comforting and supportive. Lorena, you have so much wisdom for your age. I always leave seeking, I always love seeking your advice and hearing your perspective on any dilemma, specifically in relation to the student advisory board. You truly were instrumental. Kayla, thank you for crafting the student advisory board with us and helping us run it throughout the year. We couldn't have done it without you. And then to my family. Thank you to my family for your unwavering support through it all. From missed family dinners on Tuesday nights to the frequent calls from the Scripps Ranch attendance office, you stood behind me through every step. I couldn't have done it without you. And finally, to the new student board members. You two are some of the most inspiring people to work with. I can't wait to see the, the amazing things you all do. Thank you all, I couldn't have done it without you.
It's time I put the fries in the bag, y'all. Coming into this role, I was having the biggest case of imposter syndrome, the biggest case of imposter syndrome of my life. I was afraid, I was scared, I was unsure if I can enact the duties of which I was elected to do. But the kindness and warmth of everyone in this room, the students, and the people of this school district gave me, helped me overcome this fear. I ran on the slogan, "Let YOUR VOICE BE HEARD." These were the five words that echoed in my head every time I stepped into this role. I made it my mission, my creed, that regardless of who you were, what you did, your age, your beliefs, how you lived your life, whatever, you deserve to have your voice heard. It's so easy to get caught up in the big things, the headlines, to pay attention to the students who are willing to speak up, but what about the students that don't? What about the average student that just flies by the radar from kinder all the way to senior year? Because truthfully, before all of this, that's who I was. I hope throughout my term and until the very end, I stayed true to that promise, and your voice was heard. This job has truly been a once-in-a-lifetime experience. Every day I got to come into this office or visit a school or speak to students or staff has been nothing short of a blessing. I promise, I genuinely mean it when I say it. I'm going to miss every meeting, every presentation, every agenda and discussion. I'll cherish all of it. Serving on this board has been a dream come true. I'm going to miss walking by your offices, smiling and saying hi. I'm going to miss the people, meeting students from different schools, learning about the campuses, the culture, the perspectives. You know, at first, I was really scared to work alongside adults. But now, and maybe I'm saying this because I am one now, you guys are pretty cool. And so I want to start off my thanks to none other than my other partner in crime. And I swear to God, we did not, we did not like work on this together. We ended up writing like very similar things. Trustee Baldis, Quinn, here we are, man. The end of the road. Serving to represent the students alongside you has been such an eye-opening and rewarding experience. I knew our dynamic from the very beginning was going to be interesting, and I was not wrong. I love how well we bounced ideas off of each other and how we could always count on each other. Even when things got difficult and uncertain, we persevered as a dynamic duo, all while eating Chipotle along the way. Cornell better watch out because they don't know the brawl star player that's coming to them. I wish you nothing but the best of luck in your future endeavors because you're gonna need it when we face off in the 2052 presidential election. It's been an honor, brother. Next, I want to give my utmost thanks to you, Stacy. I've been blessed to have such, no, not even such, the greatest advisor I could have ever hoped to have. You've always gone above and beyond in making sure that Quinn and I did well in our roles. You've held us to a high standard because you know, you knew how much we were capable of even when we didn't know ourselves. Even when it was as simple as being someone to talk to when things got rough, you were always there for us. You have cared and nurtured us throughout our term like the amazing mother you're soon to be. And I know you're going to be an even mentor slash mom to Ashley and Alina. From the bottom of my heart, thank you, Stacy. I also want to thank my family and friends for supporting me throughout my journey. I want to thank my former staff and teachers, like my former principal, Dr. Larkin, my AP Lang teacher, Mr. Cohen. I want to give my heartfelt thanks to the student engagement interns, Lorena, Jackie, and Kayla, for supporting us before and during our term. I want to give my thanks to the former student board members, Zachary Patterson, Leah Nepomuceno, Blessin Lavender Williams, and Matthew Patoriano, who's right there taking a picture of me. Even at my last meeting, I am still inspired by the work and accomplishments you all have made during your terms, and it's an honor to join you guys in student board member retirement. I also want to give my deepest thanks to my coworkers here and not here, who've made serving on this board so incredible and fulfilling. Thank you to the technicians who are already sitting over there making making sure that the camera's getting my good sides. Thank you to the custodians for letting me stay in the office way past any normal teenager should be let. Thank you to the police officers for making sure we're safe and protected at all times. I want to specifically shout out you, Officer Pack. Going all the way back to my swearing, you stayed with me as I waited for my ride and gave me the inspiration I needed to move forward in this role with confidence and self-assurance. Every time we've spoken before and after meetings, you've always encouraged me and made me a better person for it. And I promise I will strive to live a life that gives back to the community just as you have. I want to thank Dante, Jordan, Lonnie, and Juicy and the rest of the athletics department for being so welcoming every time I stepped through the office, even though I'm just trying to see Stacy. I want to thank Susan Gerald, the audit manager, who's now retired, who always kept Quinn and I company as we were setting up for student advisory board meetings. Speaking of student advisory board meetings, I want to thank the student advisory board members, one of which is in the audience, Samuel. Thank you. Hope you stay in the student advisory board. Thank you for your service. I want to thank James Canning. You're an awesome guy. And I thank you for moving forward with my advisory communication idea. One might say, "You got this in the can." I want to thank you, Andra. I hope one day I'll be as cool of a lawyer as you are. I want to thank you, Shaw. I want to thank you, Jen, for your constant kindness and encouragement to me. I want to thank you, Drew. I want to thank you, Pamela. I want to thank you, Lee. I hope one day I'll be even a tenth of the conversationalist you are. I want to thank you, Michelle and Scott Irwin. I want to thank you, Enrique, for always being casual and cool with me. I'll always cherish the ties you gave me, even though I really won't have a reason to wear one anymore. I want to thank you, Nicole. I want to thank you, Jessica and Francis, for always letting me come in and take snacks in your office. I want to thank you, Melissa, Marthy, and Marty, and now Susan. You three, then two, then back to three, are such a powerhouse, and I am eternally grateful for the work you all do to keep our board running. I want to thank you, Superintendent Bagula. Fabi, you've been such an incredible ally and person to work with. I'm going to miss our icebreakers during our one-on-ones, your kindness and hugs every time I would walk into your office. I'm going to miss your poems, but my excitement to see what amazing things you will accomplish as superintendent outweighs all of that. Thank you so much, Fabi. Now to the board members. Trustee Baso. Sabrina, thank you for being my buddy, my bias, my dius buddy throughout the entirety of my term. When I'm unsure of what I'm thinking or what I'm questioning, I can always turn to you, and you always encourage me to speak up and say it. Your dedication and passion for the health and well-being for our students is simply unrivaled. I always appreciate the warmth and kindness you give me every time I take a seat here. And so, from the bottom of my heart, thank you, Sabrina. Trustee Hazen, Shayna, you are the living, breathing embodiment of the saying, "The devil is in the details." And when the devil is in the details, there is no better exorcist than Shayna Hazen. I've always admired your grit and resolve into getting into the nitty-gritty and making sure that not only are the things we're voting on look good on paper, but work well in execution. I believe that if you can't outsmart 'em, outwork 'em. And you do both flawlessly. So, thank you, Shayna, for being an incredible role model to both me and the students of our school district. Vice President Barrera, you know how, like, when people get so rich, they don't even have to prove their wealth and status by wearing expensive clothing? You remind me of that. But in, but instead of something stupid and materialistic like money, you exude experience, accomplishments, valor, and care. When you walk into a room wearing a polo shirt and khakis, peak fashion, by the way, holding a Diet Coke, you walk, you walk in with a level of quite authority that only comes from a life lived in service to something greater than yourself, our students. Every policy you've championed, every school you've stood up for, and every young mind you've helped change, you wear decades of dedication, you wear decades to, of dedication to education like a well-tailored polo shirt and pair of khakis. So, I raise my Diet Coke to you, Richard, and to the board, and to the members of the audience, and to the rest of San Diego Unified, to service, to prosperity, and to education. Thank you. Trustee Whitehurst Payne, Sharon, you never cease to amaze and inspire me with each and every meeting. When I met you back in March of last year at the Delmar City Hall during the Model United Nations Conference, I would have never guessed that no less than three months later, I'd be serving alongside you on the Board of Education. You keep things down to earth. You've never gotten caught up in all the unnecessary bureaucracy. You care more about the people than the politics. And you've never lost sight of what's important, the students. You truly represent the word "represent." You represent our region of Southeast San Diego so fiercely and so proudly, I have no doubt that despite Blessen, and now I have left the board, you will continue to represent our region proudly. So, speaking on behalf of all the students of Southeast San Diego, thank you. I'm going to miss the cough drops you've given me. I'm going to miss your sermons because we all need a little prayer in our life. And most of all, I'm going to miss that little look you give me and Sabrina every time something unnecessarily goofy happens. Thank you, Sharon. And last, but certainly not least on the board, President Peterson, Cody. Where do I even begin with you, brother? From singing and crying on the dais, you are the metaphysical, existential, reality interpreting uncle I never thought I needed. Had I not served on this board and you showed me even a ten-second clip of any of your philosophical ramblings, I mean lectures, I would have been like, "Is this guy even speaking English? And he's the president of the Board of Education?" But seriously, I could not have thought of anyone else who would be as innovative and entertaining to help govern this school district other than you. Every time you turn on your mic, I'm like, "Let him cook." For all of the adults in the room, that basically means allow someone to pursue or say something without interference or interruption, even if the outcome is uncertain. And I, in my, my opinion, I think you've cooked pretty well. You don't just think outside of the box, Cody. No box can contain your thoughts. You hold a galaxy's worth of empirical, abstract, and intellectual wisdom. Thank you, Cody, for sharing that wisdom with me and everyone around you. And don't worry, I will watch Wedding Crashers soon. And to the two new student board members, Alina and Ashley, I have nothing but the absolute faith that you two will do incredibly. Getting to mentor you two as we drew closer to this day has been one of the greatest responsibilities this job had to offer. I'm going to miss our little training sessions over boba, but it's time for you two to take the reins. I cannot wait to see the things you two will accomplish during your term. My biggest piece of advice to you, be who you are. Stick to your guts. Stay true to yourself. Serve confidently. Serve apologetically. Serve loudly and proudly. Be the voice of the students you are elected to be. Once again, congratulations. Above all else, I hope, I hope I kept it real with y'all. Peace out, San Diego Unified. Joseph Cruz, AKA Mr. President, Morse High School, Class of 2025, student representative on the Board of Education, signing out.
All right, now, we are going to have our two student trustees administer the oath of office to our two new student trustees. We typically do that at the podium. So, with, if you want to stand up and, and, I, I believe, Trustee Baldis is going to administer it to Ashley and Trustee Cruz to Alina, is that correct? Okay. James, do you want to? Yeah, you'll map it all out. He's, this guy's our, he's got the optics. Get the, get the picture, yeah. Totally. Put, put the french fries in the bag. I don't know what.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Ashley Advas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Ashley.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Alina Nguyen.
I, Alina Nguyen.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
All right, I believe we're gonna... Oh, oh, there's more ritual. You got it? Okay, I see what's happening. Do you want to? Oh, from the dais? Okay, it's your show.
Greetings and salutations, Board President Peterson, Vice President Barrera, Superintendent Bagula, Board Trustees Baso Hazen and Whitehurst Payne, families, friends, staff, and most importantly, students. Tonight, I stand here with deep humility, immense gratitude, and a heart that is full. Because this moment, this oath, this seat, this responsibility, it doesn't just belong to me. It belongs to every student who has ever wondered if their voice mattered. It belongs to every young person who's dared to imagine something better and decided to help build it. And it belongs to my community. Because I wouldn't be standing here without the people who poured into me, who saw something in me before I saw it in myself. My mentors, my teachers, my peers, you've been my foundation. You've been my mirror, my compass, my courage. You reminded me that leadership You reminded me that leadership doesn't start when you get a title. It starts in the little things, in how you show up, and how you listen, and in how you love your people. And I carry that with me tonight and every night forward. There's a quote that's been echoing in my heart lately, and I'm sure many of you guys have heard this quote before, "Be the change you wish to see in the world." And it's not just a phrase that you'd see like on a, you know, like homework or a poster or even like a bus while you're on the side of the road. It's a responsibility, it's a challenge, and it's the exact reason why I'm standing here today. Because real change doesn't happen when we wait for it, it happens when we show up for it. But I didn't arrive here alone. To Joseph and Quinton, thank you so much. You've done more than just pass the torch. You've shown me and Ashley how to carry it with grace, with clarity, and with purpose. In just a month and a half of training, you've given us more lessons. You've given us more than lessons. You've given us a roadmap for how to lead with the heart. To Kayla, our student engagement intern, thank you for bringing warmth, consistency, and contagious energy into every space we share. You made this process not just manageable, but meaningful. To Stacy, you've been a steady hand in moments of uncertainty. Thank you for helping us feel not just included, but truly anchored in this space. You've made the unfamiliar feel familiar. And to Vice President Richard Barrera, thank you for being a mentor in the truest sense of the word. Your support, your wisdom, and your belief in student voice have made all the difference. You've taught me that real leadership is about uplifting others, not with just words, but with action. Now to all students across San Diego Unified, this seat is yours. I may be the one here up at the microphone, but I'm not here to speak for you. I'm here to speak with you, because of you, and in service to you. Whether you're sitting in an AP classroom or attending a continuation school, whether you're running your schools' clubs or, you know, just quietly surviving the day, even when you're just thriving or you're trying to find your footing, you matter, your voice matters, and your story deserves to be heard, seen, and honored. As your incoming student board member, I am committed to making sure student voice is not just symbolic, but systemic. I'm committed to equity, not as a distant goal, but as a daily choice. Because when we say every student, we have to mean every student, especially those too often overlooked. And I'm committed to showing up, not perfectly, but authentically, with honesty, with hope, and with a fire to move this work forward. I carry my family name, Nguyen, with pride, a name that's rooted in resilience, in grit, and in the power of community. And with that, I offer a new mantra for this chapter of service. Let's win it together, not because I have all the answers, but because I know we'll find them together. So as we begin this journey, I invite all of us, students, families, educators, board members, to commit to something bold. Let's stop waiting for change. Let's be the change. Let's listen louder, lead braver, and build better together. Thank you.
I stand before you today deeply honored to be sworn in as a San Diego Unified School District Board Member. To the board trustees and the rest of the staff that I have met so far these past few weeks, thank you for the time, the welcoming arms, and kindness that you guys have given me and Alina. I can already see the dedication and hard work you guys put each and every day to sustain and keep schools a welcoming community for all students in San Diego. I admire you all for the effort and commitment you've given to this board and the perseverance from all of you during the good and bad times. To Joseph and Quinton, thank you for being Alina and I's strongest support pillar. Their incredible leadership and unwavering support was immense. Thank you both for taking the time during your busy terms to guide me and Alina, to guide me and Alina with such care and dedication. Your mentorship, training, and encouragement have truly meant the world to us. You laid the foundation and showed us what it means to serve with a purpose, and we're so thankful for the knowledge and passion you've passed on. Your legacy will continue to inspire us as we step into this role. Alina, I can already tell that you will be the perfect partner that I will ever work with. Your passion for student success and the warmth you bring to every space is inspiring. I cannot wait to start this new chapter with you. To Kayla Nguyen, the student engagement intern, thank you for giving me the extra push that I needed to apply for this position and the constant support you always provided me with. To Stacy, I appreciate your warm smile and your sympathy. But the greatest thank you and appreciation I have to give is to everyone in the audience who came here to support, my family, my school administrators, and staff from the communities and programs I am a part of. You guys are the ones who are my motivation to continue on. A special shout out to my principal, Mr. P., who not only I have grown a strong bond with, but he is one of my biggest supporters and who I can truly name the best high school principal UC can ever have. This role is not just a title for me, it's a commitment, a commitment to every student and every classroom on every campus and every neighborhood. I see this not as a position of privilege, but as a responsibility to serve and uplift every student voice with power and purpose. I will work to create spaces where all students feel seen, supported, and included, no matter their background or school. Uplifting student leadership, mental health, academic growth, and access to resources is crucial because when students are equipped with the right tools and support, they thrive. I will listen with intention, advocate with passion, and lead with the belief that every student has the potential to grow, lead, and make a difference. We often say that students are the future leaders, but I believe we are not just the future, we are also the now. Our voices carry insight, energy, and innovation, and it's time we are included in the conversations and decisions that shape our education. I want to help create a legacy where student leadership isn't an exception, it's an expectation. To every student listening, I see you, I hear you, and I'm here for you. This is our moment to lead together. Let's build a future where every student not only has a seat at the table, but the confidence to speak, the power to lead, and the support to succeed. Thank you for trusting me with this role. I'm ready to get to work.
Wow, the force is strong in these ones. All right, well, we all need to work intensively on this board on our final speeches. These students have really upped the game on that.
I believe we're going to also change their nameplates and seat them.
Oh, yeah, nameplates. You want to change nameplates? Actually, let's change nameplates and then should we seat them for a moment? Let's seat them. Come on, you're the board, you're the trustees now. No turning back. So we'll get your plates in here, we'll get a few pictures of you with the board, and then we'll come up and take a picture together. Do we know who's going where? Oh, my goodness. Changing the guard. James, you want to get a couple pictures with the new trustees and then we'll all... Hold on, folks. Yep. What? You want to do a, okay, it's up to you. You'll take some private pictures of them, but just, yeah, okay, that sounds good. All right, with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and we're then going to take some pictures with our new and our former trustees here. So, this meeting is now adjourned. The next regular meeting will be held on July 8th, 2025. Thanks for joining us this evening, and we're gonna take some pictures.